Tim, he has a link, but he's not going to join.
Mr. Enos, she can hear us?
So is he in Miami?
Yeah.
Long.
Yeah, okay.
I want to get that right.
Right, yes.
Liked your video. That was, uh...
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our monthly work session, June 17th, 2025. I'd like to welcome Mrs. Barker, Mrs. Ziegler, Mr. Edwards, Superintendent Connor, Mrs. Tompkins, and all staff that are here. And Mr. Enos is in Miami at a law enforcement conference, so I'm the person today that gets to facilitate this meeting. So we have a full agenda, and it will be a long agenda, so let's start with Mr. Connor. Would you like to do number one, the K-12 comprehensive reading plan?
Thank you, Vice Chair, and we want to hand it right on over to our academic services team. Every year, we bring forth to the board a K-12 comprehensive reading plan that outlines all of the strategies that we're embarking upon in terms of improving literacy in our school district. And so this is a part of our annual routine, and we have some wonderful guests with us today in our academic service team led by our Deputy Superintendent Rachel O'Day, who will introduce the team and begin.
Good morning, thank you, and good morning, Mr. Connor and board members. I have here with me this morning our Chief of Elementary Schools, Mrs. Jennifer Minnelli, and our Director for Middle School Curriculum, Ms. Kiara Bryant, and we will be sharing with you a high-level overview of our comprehensive evidence-based reading plan. And as a reminder for the community, I'll just wait for the PowerPoint. One second. All right, thank you. As a reminder to the community, this is, as Mr. Connor said, an annual obligation of every school district to outline and create our comprehensive evidence-based reading plan. It is due to the state every year by August 1st, and it is to guide the work of our district-managed schools and then those charter schools that choose to opt into our plan. It focuses on literacy leadership, curriculum and instruction, strategic project monitoring, and differentiated professional learning. It is guided by a collaborative tool and data reflection and analysis, as well as ensuring that we are anchored in the science of reading and other research-based best practices. And to take us back a year ago, we spent an extensive amount of time in a workshop reviewing the comprehensive evidence-based reading plan because at that time, it did go under some major revisions as we were aligning the entire plan to the science of reading and upgrading some of those research-based practices. That was also the time in which we were able to envision our Literacy for All initiative and begin outlining and explaining that for implementation, which included creating that literacy leadership team across all schools in K-12, led by literacy coaches and in some cases, supported by interventionists, and also in collaboration with our school-based leaders. That you will find as a golden thread throughout this plan, as well as its deep connection to our strategic plan. Every student achieves pillar one, every student supported pillar two, and very heavily aligned to priority 1.2, which really outlines those action steps regarding our Literacy for All initiative. We won't go too deep into that today. Our August 4th board meeting, where we're doing a full update on pillar one, will dive very, very deep into literacy for all, where we are and what our goals are to continue to advance that work. But you will also find alignment within our evidence-based reading plan. Some other reasons why we bring this to you annually, we do have to update all plans to include our legislative updates, so we've had some rule revisions. The first three rule revisions were very much focused on our early learners, ensuring that we had criteria to identify substantial reading disability, that we engage in a timeline and best practice of creating an individualized progress monitoring plan for students identified with a substantial reading disability, as well as ensuring there's funding to purchase supplemental resources to provide high-quality tiered interventions at those VPK classroom levels. As far as recent changes and new rules that have been passed, the state is focusing on ensuring that districts are held accountable to staffing early learning classrooms pre-K through 2 with highly qualified teachers or high-performing teachers. And on a positive note, in Sarasota County, the majority of our teachers are high-performing and highly qualified, so that doesn't present an issue for us in maintaining that obligation or that plan, as we try to do that in every classroom, K through 12. In addition to ensuring if you have a student with substantial reading disability and you are providing those strategic tier-three interventions, that you have the credentialing, the certification, and endorsements required to do that with fidelity and to ensure that they're having the best opportunity to advance out of those deficiencies. So, and if you don't obtain those, let's say I'm a kindergarten teacher and I may be new and I'm working towards some of those endorsements, our literacy leadership team for the past two years, we've been working on reading endorsement, state coaching endorsement, as well as dyslexia certifications and another variety of micro-credentialing. So we do have really strong literacy teams in our schools that then can supervise that work being done, so either way, we are covered in that respect as far as new legislation. We, as I stated, our charter schools have the opportunity to opt in but don't have to, and the visual on the right side, you'll see seven out of our 15 charter schools that continue to follow our reading plan, which comes with staffing requirements as far as a literacy coach and interventionist, so they are doing that. And the schools on the left side are not, and they have to submit their own plan that we review and submit to the state for them. And we continue to focus on advancing our support with charter schools, although we don't have staffing for that, it is a major stretch, but we find that that's very important because our students in Sarasota County, whether district managed or charter schools, are our students to provide a premier educational experience to, so we do partner through these four avenues with our charter schools. We have our monthly charter school principal meetings that are completely different from district-managed schools, working with them to advance and meet their needs. We also have the Literacy for All cadre work, if they're a part of our reading plan and they have the staffing, they do attend those best practices and monthly PLCs that we're working on. They're invited to engage in impact reviews if they so choose, and they also engage in our customized professional learning pathways that all other educators have the opportunity for. So looking at our reflection tool and the compass that's utilized to help us with this plan, I'll now turn it over to Ms. Minnelli.
Thank you, good morning, everyone. This year, the DOE provided all districts with a reflection tool to really support the teams in analyzing the current status of their SERP and focusing in all shifts and modifications in these key areas that are highlighted here. So our team was able to utilize this tool and dive in, and luckily for us, because of the work we had done the year prior, we were in a really good place with our SERP, and so the modifications and updates are pretty minimal. You'll notice throughout the PowerPoint that there are this little image of a golden thread, that's to showcase the K-12 golden thread that we are really pushing forward with and making sure that all of our updates and initiatives are aligned K-12 while still allowing us to provide the supports that are needed at each individual level. After completing that reflection tool, our team was able to identify these priority actions aligned with those five key areas. So really supporting our school leaders and guiding and sustaining literacy excellence, ensuring that our coaches are earning their state-approved coach endorsement, which we are moving forward with that this year, we're very excited about that, creating a streamlined approach for K-12 instruction, ensuring that that tier-one instruction is grounded in our MTSS framework, but also really focused around responsive instruction, which we'll talk more about as we get into the individual levels, and then ensuring that our professional learning is really linked to that science of reading as well as understanding those foundational skills that are necessary. In addition, our K through 12 priority actions are also aligned to the accountability and monitoring supports that our state provides to us, so you'll see here the formula for reading success. We are ensuring that all supports that we provide to our schools, as well as everything outlined here in our SERP that we'll be talking through, matches this formula for success, and our school-based leadership work, as well as the supports that we're providing for teachers, are in direct alignment with that. I will be turning it back over to Mrs. O'Day to speak to us about our K-12 professional learning opportunities.
Okay, this topic really excites me, but I'm going to stay focused on the topic at hand. We are very fortunate to have partnered with Community Foundation and the Baransik Foundation to really give us access and pathways to high-quality professional learning opportunities. Currently, the Community Foundation has stepped up big time for us in working with us to approve a Strauss literacy grant that is a multi-year grant that really is doing the heavy lifting as it pertains to our Literacy for All initiative. So a lot of the training that you see outlined here for K-12 staff is focused within that Strauss grant. It also launched last week in our Literacy for All initiative, and even as you heard Ms. Minnelli talking about literacy coach endorsement, and we talk about dyslexia certification, that's coming from our Strauss literacy grant as well, in addition to complementing through our Baransik grant. We wrote the Baransik grant first, and we have coverage there to do some of that work, but then again, the Community Foundation stepped up and really wanted to be a partner in this literacy work, lifted that out, giving us some more freedom and access with those funds in the Baransik grant, but they are fundraising to fund our literacy for all strategic initiatives as far as providing skills, tools, pathways, and support for that literacy leadership team that we've invested so much in. So I'm very excited about that, and you'll see some of that listed there regarding K-12 professional learning, and you'll hear more about that as we talk about the different levels. When we look at some of those legislative updates when it comes to voluntary pre-K, you heard Ms. Cardenas present in May as a part of the Student Support Services presentation, so some of that information overlaps. I do encourage the community to go back and look at that if they want to hear in more depth, because I don't want to be repetitive, but it's very much focused on ensuring we have criteria to identify the substantial reading deficiency, and we do, K through 12, and also talking a little bit about the Summer Bridge program, which was new this year, which are for students that score under the 10th percentile on STAR Early Literacy or PM3 for pre-K students. And I'm happy to say that in our district-managed school student body, we did not have anyone qualify for Summer Bridge, which is excellent, because that means that they're not falling into that concerning category of performance. We are holding Summer Bridge because we do have private providers and students that need that, and so we do still host that, and so that is occurring at this time. And then as far as VPK professional learning, you'll see these categories overlap with elementary and middle, but these are professional learning opportunities geared towards just that staff, which is great, okay? To be able to offer this type of professional learning just for that group of teachers is excellent, and some of this overlaps with just some of the mandated things that they're expected to have engaged with to be employable in that role, but you'll see that we have multiple things covered, from using high-quality resources to dealing with students that may fall into substantial reading categories, and that becomes complex as far as providing those tiered interventions and then ensuring that they know how to use those diagnostic progress monitoring tools. So that's that professional learning aligned to our earliest learners, and now I'll turn it over to Ms. Minnelli for K-5 updates.
Thank you. So as mentioned earlier, last year, we made some significant changes to our SERP in alignment with state statute. Some of those changes really were highlighted in our comprehensive tiered instruction plan and ensuring that our tier-one instruction really highlighted that responsive instruction component that is needed, and so that way, we are not forced to look so much at the interventions that are needed, because as we say often, you can't intervene your way out of a tier-one concern. So many of those modifications were made last year with revision of our decision trees to support our teams in that problem-solving process. So those things you'll see here, they're all noted as minor adjustments, because we have made tweaks and modifications on what we are seeing as needs in our school, and then of course, the new components around the K-2 teachers being prioritized as having highly effective teachers is also highlighted in our SERP. Thank you. As far as professional learning that is being provided at the elementary level, everything outlined here for you is ongoing. It began in years prior, except for those things I highlighted in orange, those are brand-new for this school year. So something we're really excited about is our interdisciplinary content in the literacy blocks. We're supporting school leaders and teachers to understand that connection between the ELA instruction, as well as the content being delivered in Science and Social Studies, and our team has created resources for the schools to be able to directly align their instruction using their ELA units of instruction as the baseline, and then connecting that to our Science and Social Studies core curriculum. We shared that with our principals and assistant principals just recently at SLI that we hosted last week, and then our teachers will be engaging in professional learning around this during our pre-planning week when we return in August. Intervention materials are considered as well this school year. We are engaging in an adoption process for additional intervention materials that may be needed, and of course, our receipt coach endorsement, our team is so excited about that work in partnership with UF and Lasting Our Center. And with that, I will pass it over to Kiara to talk about secondary.
Thank you, good morning, everyone.
Good morning, everyone. I am here representing 6 through 12 secondary, and one of the action steps that we are taking as a secondary team is we're refining our tier-one process, that responsive teaching. One of those responsive decisions that may happen in tier-one is small group instruction, and we want to ensure that our teachers have all that they need. This might be something new for secondary teachers, so as you'll see noted, we want to ensure that we have professional learning opportunities for them, so they not only know how to plan for it, but how to execute small group instruction in that secondary classroom. In addition, we've worked to update our decision trees to help with that decision-making process based on data, and we have expanded our curriculum resources in regards to tier-two and tier-three interventions, working to make it easier for teachers depending on what the targeted need is of particular students. On this slide, you'll note some of the professional learning we have planned for this year. Just as mentioned earlier, some items are a continuation of things that have happened in the past, and the things that are highlighted in the orange are those new options that we're going to have this year. So as mentioned, those small group frameworks, we're going to be implementing that. In addition, we are going to be doing integrating literacy strategies within all of our content areas, because we know if we have high-quality tier-one instruction across the board with literacy skills, that we will have to intervene less, because we're able to catch kids before they need that intensive intervention. Lastly, you will see that we are also in the secondary lens, providing opportunity for our literacy coaches to get that state endorsement, and we're going to continue to support our literacy interventionists as well, and I'm going to hand it over to Mrs. O'Day to talk a little bit more about a really amazing opportunity that our coaches, our interventionists, and our administrators were just able to engage in.
And that would be the thing I'm always very excited about, is our Literacy for All Institute, which we call our Literacy Wedding, and it does work with our interventionists, our coaches, and our administrators. There are pathways for everyone, because this is a collaborative team effort, and everybody's role is a little bit different to make this work in the successful ways that we've already seen. As you know, this past school year was the first time we've had six 12 literacy coaches in the room, and, excuse me, working in our schools, and that has yielded some really awesome results that we'll talk more about on July 22nd, when we review our student performance data, and including other programatics that they were able to lead in support in our secondary schools. So we're very excited about, I want to call them, the literacy army. They're in there leading in making sure that we're lifting this work, and they're working in tandem with administrators and school-based, or excuse me, teachers, but then also our students. And this Literacy for All Institute is that time to come together, reflect, and continue to learn and advance each year, so that when they go back in the schools, they're taking forward that new learning, implementing, collaborating, and advising that work at their school level. We did have a guest speaker, her name was Diane Sweeney. She is the author of the Student-Centered Coaching Framework that we chose to utilize starting last Literacy Institute, and the reason we chose that framework is exactly the word you hear, "student." It's not about looking at the teacher and saying what they're doing wrong or right, it's looking at the student and saying, "What do they need from us as adults?" It's not about adults, it's about students, and really learning what students' data is saying that they need, what their in-class performance and behaviors are saying that they need, and that's that coaching model the literacy coach uses with the classroom teacher to support one another, advancing their instructional capacity to then meet the needs of students. What a very powerful time, it really did kickstart what we did in SLI with the Heart of Leadership, because there's a heart in coaching as well. So that was a really great institute, very thankful again for the Baransik Foundation and the Community Foundation for giving us the possibility to create that very purposeful learning and environment that everyone deserves the opportunity to learn and grow with. So that's how we ended our Year of Literacy, and you'll see, we just have some pictures from that on our last page. And at this time, if there are any questions regarding this year's updates, we will take them at this time, Mr. Connor.
Any questions from the board? Mrs. Barker?
Thank you, thank you. There are few things in life that make me happier than hearing about good reading instruction, so thank you so, so much. This is very exciting, and obviously, a huge thank you to our partners, the Community Foundation and Baransik. Having had a kindergartner this year and experiencing this really strong phonics-based instruction, I mean, she's on to chapter books now, well, she would take offense at me calling her a kindergartner, because she is now a first grader, but truly my fastest to read by far, so huge kudos, huge kudos. In thinking about instruction, as we develop more fluent readers, more, you know, readers that are able to decode better segment and blend, and what is the plan to move us forward from that into the deeper reading comprehension, which I know is so much harder to move the needle on than phonics, obviously, but I've noticed particularly now with my older children, and this isn't just in Sarasota, this is across the country, teachers are using more and more often passages, like select passages, and there's less exposure to whole text, like the entire book, and it's a different type of reading comprehension, right? Because like, it's not the who, what, where, when answering the questions that align with our fast testing, it's really that deeper critical thinking and evaluating. And I'm just, I'm wondering if, once we kind of get really strong with our phonics, are we, is there a plan to move towards addressing some of those deeper reading comprehension skill and giving students more of an opportunity to access full-length texts? And then with that, the writing, the written expression here has always been something that I've been a little, I felt like maybe we didn't address as explicitly as we use some of other skill sets. There isn't necessarily like a writing block, teachers are required to teach written expression, and as those skills are reciprocal, that reading comp and written expression go together, I feel like sometimes our teachers don't feel confident in their ability to teach writing and written expression, and then our students don't develop that, the stamina for writing, and it's a skill that I feel like, at least for my kids, I didn't really see addressed explicitly until fourth grade, when we had the 48 fast test, and I was like, "Well, we could have been doing this all along." And then it kind of gets dropped again, a little bit, and I just wonder if there's a way to, as we move, you know, just constantly thinking about moving, pushing ourselves forward as we move, as we're really strong in phonics, kind of moving into a little bit of a focus on those higher-level reading skills?
Yeah, so a lot of, we reflected on as far as the high-level overview, does position into substantial deficiencies, dyslexia, and making sure that we're advancing those students and providing the right tiered interventions, as that's very complex. So this is focused on that, highlighting that, but it doesn't take away from what we do from our on- and above-level students. And as they say, reading is breathing in and writing is breathing out, and our literacy block in elementary especially is robust, it is between 90 and 120 minutes, depending on the school and the demographics, and there's a sliding scale throughout the week on how long they spend in whole group, small group, and writing, and it really is dependent upon, because we are, you know, standards-based, if it's the beginning of a unit, there may be heavier whole group, heavier teacher-directed lessons. lessons, or maybe even heavier independent practice. And then we move into differentiation based on how students are demonstrating their learning within tier one. And as we move through that unit, you may see more tier two, more tier three, but we are still advancing performance of students as well. And that's why it's so difficult, to be quite honest with you. It is a very heavy lift to be a literacy teacher, which is why, when Mr. Connor came, we focused very heavily on that literacy leadership team to support and guide and help collaborate, plan, and initiate all the things that have to be moving parts all the time, all year in a literacy block. They do use excerpts at times to, you know, one of the ways in primary to advance literacy comprehension is to use those excerpts more than once, because once you build background knowledge on a content, you can teach a different standard through the same passage. And that allows them to look through that text differently and alleviate the rebuilding of prior knowledge, but focus on the addition of mastering the skill in that standard. But that should not forego reading novels and sustaining reading, of reading for enjoyment or assigned reading. But I'm also going to kick it over to Ms. Marinelli, and I know she loves, this is her passion, her joy in K5, so I want to give you an opportunity, if you wanted to add into that.
Sure, thank you. It's, I mean, it's a great point, and, you know, I echo everything that Mrs. O'Day shared. I think it's also important for our teachers to know the students that are in front of them, and every year that varies. And so what we've tried to do is provide supports to our school that will allow for the teachers to be responsive to the group that is in front of them. So we have an intensified literacy block in comparison to our traditional literacy block, where there might be shifts. If there is more than 30% of the class who is demonstrating below or below level or struggling needs in the area, then we suggest that they move to that intensified block, where there is more of a heavier lift on that phonics and foundational literacy skill component. However, for our cohorts of students that aren't demonstrating that, that shift back to that more traditional literacy block, where there is a heavier emphasis on that comprehension work, is there as well. So making sure that the supports that we're providing to the schools are also in line with exactly what you're speaking about. I mentioned briefly about the interdisciplinary content work we're bringing forward, and that's starting as early as kindergarten. So I think the old-school kind of mindset was, you know, first you learn to read, and then you relearn. But we know that that's just not true, that our youngest little ones can be reading to learn, in fact. And so that disciplinary work is so important for that, because there's only so many minutes in the day. And so allowing the teachers to see that connect between their literacy block, as well as their science and social studies resources, in one, you know, user-friendly, one-stop-shop place, to be able to pull in those texts that are more comprehensive, but also still developmentally and foundationally appropriate to whatever grade level they're in, will support that as well. Sure thing.
And that was a very element-heavy answer. If there's any, you know, if you want to hear a little bit more about secondary, we can speak to that, too, if there's questions.
I was just curious how we keep moving forward. And to me, reading comprehension is kind of, and written expression together are sort of a logical next development, when I'm thinking about cognition, like the next step developmentally. So, thank you, thank you so much.
Mrs. Ziegler?
Thank you. Well, there's a lot, and I actually really appreciate Mrs. Barker's concept. You know, I think that having seen this come full circle, or not, no, we're halfway there. But over the years, it's very nice to really, I mean, when Mr. Connor came in, I know the collectively said, you know, that reading was a primary area that, of course, it is, and it should be, because it's the tide lifts all ships. And I really appreciate, I mean, there was a lot of, for lack of a better term, remedial work that needed to be done, and as a system. I mean, I look at it from the educator standpoint, but I also really appreciate the concept of each year that cohort changes dramatically. And so being able to have the appropriate training and levers and support, so that we can respond, customize the education, which is obviously the goal. At the same token, you can see where we, so I appreciate the answer, because the insight where if we don't want to only focus on these lower, you know, the ones that we are trying to lift up, and then potentially risk losing the top line of continuously that advance, I can say, just looking at my three children, some did not have the strongest reading, you know, support. And it really does change the trajectory as they get into more complex secondary, et cetera. Whereas, you know, two others are just, I mean, it's amazing. And it really does change the outlook on child's confidence of just education as a whole. So I really do appreciate that. And I don't know that we really have focused on secondary in the same way, because it's like, "Hope we get them there by third grade." And if not, like, and I know that's a very, obviously not really, but it was, a lot of times from the aggregate where we're standing is a lot of the conversations. And so, you know, I know we're on a tight schedule today, but I know that work is being done. I would share, I'd love to learn a little bit more about that, because I don't know from a support standpoint, or are there other things that we're running into? Or is it, because I can't even imagine in a middle school element, you don't have the same amount of time with those students. And so, but I'm glad to know you guys are on it. And, you know, when we look at the scores coming in, I mean, that's really what drives those decisions. So I'm not saying, "Hey, do a presentation if it's an area of, you know, that we don't, you know, that we have a good handle on." And again, that always is demonstrated on the aggregate and the core, I'm sorry, it's for the numbers, and I know we're going to be looking at those. But I know you guys are looking at those consistently, and would let us know if we're bracing for impact, which I don't believe is the case, so I'm very excited to hear that. I love the concept of the literacy army. I love that. They're on the front lines, and having that support, because there is so much time in a day. And, you know, and a lot of my tips, the more families can continuously help this process makes a huge difference. But I also understand you guys got to focus on what you have in front of you. So, you know, as a board member, as a parent who understands a serious, you know, you can see the very wide differences in just the way a child learns and what they're exposed to. My pitch to parents, too, really take that seriously, and read to your kids early on, because it makes a huge difference. But thank you for all the work you guys are doing. It's really extraordinary and very exciting, so thank you.
There is a lot of great stuff to share about secondary, but you're going to get part of that on the July 22nd boardwork session, because there are specific actions that occurred in secondary that we're going to tie directly towards those outcomes. And then whatever remains from there on August 4th, we'll be going through in depth. So you'll hear about the scheduling, intensive reading, what happens, you know, if you're a high-performing secondary student versus someone with substantial reading deficiencies. All of that is mapped out, and very excited to share those updates with you. A lot really good things happening there.
Mr. Edwards?
Thank you. Couple things. I'm focused more on where the hurdles are. So I love that Mrs. Barker talked about gaps and identifying those gaps. But the challenge that I see, I mean, I loved also hearing about innovation. Quite honestly, for this is the first time I'm hearing about going all the way into VPK and talking about instruction, how it's reciprocal, and really the reading to learn and learn to read. All those things are refreshing to hear that we're grabbing a hold of innovation and driving forward. I hadn't heard that in our literacy plans on an ongoing basis. I always ask the question, "Why is this year different from last year?", so I could sort of look for that, but this, you're expressing it very well. The other thing that I want to get to is, if we're having this army of people, and they're starting all the way from VPK, and we get to secondary, it would seem to me those high-intensity interventions would be eliminated unless we inherited the student from somewhere else. So that's, those are the challenges that I'd like to hear about. I'd like to, because I'm not saying that you guys intentionally say, "Well, we'll just pass this one along, and they'll fix it next year." I don't think that's anyone's intention. But I'd like to hear more about, how do we get to the point where we don't have as many secondary interventions unless we inherited the student elsewhere?
So it will, there will be a version of that, where through time, having a strong pre-K5 educational experience will reduce the amount of support that a student may need moving through six through 12. But there are going to be cases where students require tier-three interventions pre-K through 12, all the way through, because that is what they need to continue to respond to instruction, because everyone learns at a different rate and processes differently. So there are going to be cases, many, where students are always going to receive tier-three interventions to be successful. So that's the first thing. But when we have more of a general education student, that may be a little less over time, depending on what new topics they're learning, will dictate how they respond. So sometimes, even if you take this conversation to math, I may have done great in geometry, but horrible in algebra. I may have done really, really well in comp science, but really, really bad in a different in biology class. So the new content exposure always brings about change to what students need. So that's why we coined the term responsive instruction. We say, "You can come in with the highest-level skills and data, but when you're learning something new, you may require intervention support to jump back into that high-performing space, or you might always be the student who I'm bringing back to provide interventions to ensure you access the material." So that's that sliding scale, that's the strategic progress monitoring data, that's saying, "Everyone in front of me is new day, and how you're responding to me dictates how I respond to you." And that's why it's very complex.
I'm not saying that it's not. And I appreciate that it's not a one-size-fits-all. So I, having said that, what I also heard, and you said, "Well, we're starting here, but we're also connecting it to the comprehension of social studies," so that you make that full circle of literacy and connecting the content of social studies, so the comprehension piece is reciprocal. I heard that. But the other challenge that I think is here that hasn't been discussed, is that literally we had to delay graduation down to minutes of instruction, literally. So when we're talking about literacy, and we're trying to have an intervention, we're trying to get those youngsters through those challenges, is minutes of the day a challenge to that?
Oh, yes. I mean, time is of the essence. I think, you know, you as a board member has brought it up several times, and other board members, and, you know, the amount of time it takes to implement responsive instruction, and trying to differentiate and customize learning, from planning, to looking at data, to implementing, and then responding when the plan quite didn't work, right? The time is always going to be an issue. I mean, we'd always want more time, more time all the time.
And I'll add to that. That probably is the commodity, the resource in this equation that is the most important. When you talk about student learning, and the fact that it takes all of those aspects to make that happen, and when you get into secondary, it gets even more limited, which is why we have additional blocks of intensive reading on top of ELA. And of course, it just doesn't happen there. It does happen in science, it does happen in social studies. But that strategic intervention work is really critical. More time on task, the more time to deal with those interventions and to respond to that is the challenge for us always consistently.
Okay, so that's my point. I don't want to sit here and rah 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 and say, "Yay, literacy, it's all marching down, and we're getting there." There's a hurdle here, and it's very real. And that's going to go away unless we face that head-on and understand that the time of minutes of instruction is a challenge to making sure that we don't end up with those kinds of problems in secondary, just because we couldn't, we didn't have enough time to get to it. That's not a solution, not saying that it's entirely up to the literacy army to fix. I'm saying that we have to come up with perhaps better after-school programming, perhaps better additional interventions that are not part of the day of instruction that were led by minutes. And I think that's a challenge that board members and the community can figure out together to try and to scoop up, because at the end of the day, we're still facing, how do we be competitive as public education? I don't want to lose a student to a private school or a charter school, because they have a better intervention or a better after-school policy, and when, in fact, we know those are the kinds of challenges. So I'm not looking for the answer today, but I'm saying that those are things that we should be talking about from the administrative side, to the board side, to the community involvement side, to make those kinds of things, so that when we get to secondary, we've solved those problems. Thank you. One last question, one, I'm sorry. Our new budget, no, not new, our budget challenges, did it affect this literacy plan in any way?
No.
Thank you.
For now.
Thank you, everyone, for your questions and the input. I just have a few, but I just have a couple of comments, too. I think the issue brought up about time. And Sarasota County has 30 minutes extra each day, and we're still talking about time. And we only have so much, and we know we only have one shot at educating our students each day. So I think, too, with the after-school, that conflicts with extracurricular. And it's, you know, some parents want their children to be, play and be in extracurricular, and when the day's done, the day's done. So that is something we have to, if we ever go down that road, that's going to take a lot of planning, because it can only be something that the district offers. It can't be something that's made it after hours. So also, my questions are just a little bit different and maybe deeper. How is the individual small group for reading going in the six through 12? And what does that look like?
I'll have Ms. Bryant respond, but we have some really great models. Woodland Bean at the top of their game right now with their small group instruction, but then also our intensive reading classes are leading the way with that model and that framework, which serves as a model for other teachers within this school to learn from that framework. But then, Ms. Bryant, would you like to add to that?
Just to echo what you mentioned. So this year, in our secondary classrooms, specifically in middle school, we implemented a new intervention, Phonics for Reading. And that is targeted towards a particular subset of students who need this intervention based on their gaps. And the way that you can pull it off is through small group instruction. And as I mentioned earlier, small group instruction in the secondary classroom maybe feel new. So we provided intensive support to those classrooms at the beginning of the year, as they started implementing this. Just as you mentioned, to see it take off and to see it start to spread, that this can indeed happen with students who are older, to really target what their needs are. So we're seeing it take off in our intervention classrooms, and what we want to do is, we want to spread it. So those students that may not be in an intensive reading classroom, but may need a little additional support, they can get that same kind of model of teaching within their core ELA block. So lots of great work has been this year, specifically in our IR classrooms, and we're looking to expand that.
And then in high school... And maybe that's something with Mr. Connor, and if other board members are interested, that we could come and observe, so we can actually see it in action. And then when we're asked questions, we have that firsthand knowledge to say, "This is what we saw going on." So that's just a suggestion for school year.
And Ms. Marinelli, you were a part of our Read 180 walks in the high schools, and that's similar. Phonics for Reading is in middle school, and then Read 180 is in high school. And starting with those classrooms and really supporting those teachers, I mean, we've pulled them for PLCs, provided sub-coverage, given additional training. We have peer-to-peer coaching, they're observing each other. We've really created a very strong model to then replicate and scale that through rest of secondary, six through 12, that may demonstrate the need for that type of structure. So we're excited about that work, and absolutely invite you to engage in those walks with us.
And then that leads me to my next question. So how much screen time do our students actually have when it comes to reading? Because that's something that I get questions about, that our students spend too much time on computer instead of teacher instructions. So could you address that?
Yes, so far with our blended learning platforms, our elementary curriculum directors and our secondary curriculum directors actually send those reports out to show the minutes that kids are or aren't, because there's actually a sweet spot for that, there's a formula. And if you're underutilizing it, it's not going to have an impact, but if you're overutilizing it, it goes the same direction. So we're absolutely coaching them and monitoring that, that goes out in our AWN newsletter, you know, when we have those reports, for people to monitor what that blended learning looks like. And if there is extreme usage, those conversations by the level chiefs are had, or if it's underutilized, that same conversation, because you don't get any bang for your buck if you're on either side of that. You have to be, you know, in the middle, monitoring it and making those adjustments to those platforms as well. You know, there's an mechanism for teachers to check in to say, "Okay, Ms. Marinelli needs to be moved to next passage or this next level." And some do it automatically, and some do not. It requires that teacher check-in to be utilized well, so it is monitored.
And what does AWN stand for?
Administrator Weekly Newsletter.
Okay, thank you.
And just to give a numerical number in terms of recommendations, because we use things like iReady, so the recommendation is 45 minutes a week. And remember that our total instructional block there, even if on the low end is 90 minutes of instruction, that's 450 minutes, so you're talking 10% of the literacy block should be spent on a platform like that.
Okay, thank you. That's really good to know, because we hear that, you know, it's a lot each day. So that's, so my last question, is there flexibility at each school to address their individual needs based on student reading? So do they, I know that everybody gets the same, but is there the flexibility if a school comes to you and says, "You know, I really need something else to supplement this reading, that phonics or comprehension, or even if it's writing..." that phonics or comprehension, or even if it's writing? If it's approved, is there room for that? And can you explain that process?
Yeah, we have a new process now. So the instructional resources that we're putting in front of children do have to be district-approved. They also have to be state-approved. So the resources that are in play come from the state-approved bucket, but then we have to approve them as a district, that that is a resource that complements what we're already using. Because even at our most recent state conference, their focus cohesion and that golden thread and that alignment, and if you're using too many programs and your program jumping, that's again a deficit. So it's done in collaboration with the teacher to say, okay, here's what you've done, here's what you've had, here's what the data said that you need, here's what you want to do. There is a process where they would submit it to the principal. The principal then submits it to the curriculum team, and our curriculum director will review it and either approve or disapprove that, but they will have that conversation as to why that doesn't work, or why that would be a great asset and how they can help them. So there is a process that, but it isn't an automatic yes or an automatic no, we do go through that process for the integrity of cohesion of instructional programming and to make sure that it is a highly qualified research-based science of reading resource. So, you know, one of the biggest shifts was decodables and leveled readers. Science of Reading's decodables, leveled readers are not something that we use anymore, you know. So some of those shifts off of old resources were challenging, but it doesn't mean that they can't bring something in that they think is going to work really well and work with their principal first, and then their principal seeks support from district if they can't determine that on their own.
Okay, thank you. I think from this whole discussion, I hope the community realizes how complex reading is. And that's why it's called the science of reading. And for those of us that remember the scientific method, reading is almost like that because you have to, is this working? Is that not working? What, you're always trying to determine what is the best instruction. So thank you very much for this presentation. And any further questions? Mrs. Ziegler?
And this, I think, is more, I'm going to put it out there, and then I want the superintendent maybe to come back because it's kind of a big question to say, hey, what do you, but kind of in the field where Mr. Edwards was is, so we have a lot of things going in the right direction, and so of course we want to continue on that ship. There's nothing worse, as we always talk about, the one thing that's consistent is change in education. But, you know, if you were to look at, you know, what your definition of success looks like as we move into the next year, what are the impediments that we are facing? I can think, we haven't even talked about technology, and it's that we're, I mean, we did, but not to the aspect of how do we lean on technology in a smart way, but also make sure it's not, you know, abusing the time, it's a tool to lean on. I'm way more on the camp of, I want like at least K through three to have like as little technology as possible, and then whatever, but that's a big kind of out-there issue that, you know, how do we balance those skills? But from a broader aspect of what is the biggest risk factor as you look into next year that we may not be addressing or should be discussing, and it doesn't mean that that solution weighs solely on your shoulders as a superintendent, but to the board, what does that forecasting look like, if at all? So I think that would be a good, maybe as we come around next week, or next, not week, next month, is that right? But, because it's a big question, but I think that's where, I mean, at least, and I appreciate that point of view because that's also where we're here to help problem solve if that is the case. So, thank you. Thank you. Great presentation.
And I think we all have questions when it comes to our last agenda item on the budget. So I would recommend that we ask those questions, we get into that part, so it's not, we can start thinking about it. I've already started making notes, and I think everybody else has, but, so we stay on topic, but when we get to the budget and the questions we have, let's address that then so we don't start getting off on tangents so we can stay on point. Okay, thank you. All right. Anything else on the comprehensive reading plan? If not, we'll move to number two, safety and security updates. And Mr. Connor?
Then I'll have our team transition up and, under the direction of our Chief of Police and our Executive Directors, or Directors of Safety and Security, will come up, and they're going to speak around a, just some updates in the realm of school safety, as well as go over our latest inspection report. And I do want to bring to the board, I know there's been some interest in an independent review of our police department. I know we're at a time where in 2018, we've stood up this department, it's been almost getting close to a decade, and we'll have some conversation around a proposal to move forward with that. So at this time, we'll turn it over to the team.
Good morning, Superintendent, Board members. Thank you for having us this morning. It's an honor for me to be here with this amazing team and represent not only a police department, but all the employees in safety and security. I can tell you that our team is dedicated to not only do what's required by state law when it comes to the House, which has come out that really drive safety and security throughout the state, but really what's the best interest of the schools in this county as far as keeping us safe. And so they are very proactive in ensuring that, and they pivot when changes happen, which they often do. So I'm very proud to be able to stand by these men and work side by side with them. With that, to my left is Mr. Sean O'Keefe, Director of Safety and Security Technology, and then Jason Overbay, Director of Safety and Security Emergency Management and School Safety Specialist. We will go over our strategic plan, and within that, we will also provide the legislative required Q4 reports. And with that, we'll get started with Mr. Overbay.
Good morning. We're really excited to be here. I get to start with 4.3.1 and how we are progressing with the strategic plan and how we leverage our personnel, technology, and our collaboration with law enforcement to strengthen school security. We are working very closely with all responders and agencies in the county and outside the county to enhance how we do things and how we keep the schools secure and how we help with students. We've started working very intently with Student Services and all of the agencies in Sarasota County. Yes, ma'am. With the Handle Care Program, just real briefly on that, if there's an incident out in the counties that affect children in our school district, we have a form that the officers or deputies will fill out and they'll send back to us. They won't go into detail over what happened with the student, that they had an issue, and then we make sure that gets out to the school, we make sure the counselors are aware so that that student gets extra help inside the school to make sure that they get through their day. We've also started a county-wide threat management team where we have included the Department of Juvenile Justice, the State Attorney's Office, all of the different jurisdictions to make sure that we are sharing information with them and that they are also bringing the information that's happening out in the community back to us so that we are all staying aware of what's going on. Inside of that program, we also talked to them about students that may be unenrolling from our schools and doing home instruction so that we make sure everyone stays informed about where our students of concern are and no one falls through the cracks. We also work very, very closely with all of our charter schools to make sure that their students are getting the same care that our students inside of our traditional schools are getting. We are up to date with our school safety visits and tours, which are statutorily required every three years. We do a third of our schools every year, a little over a third of our schools every year. We're very excited about our tour coming up at Sky Ranch. That'll be in late July, right before school starts. We have a lot of safety enhancements at Sky Ranch that we're excited to show off and talk to the county about. We have provided maps through a grant last year to all of our first responders, and we're working to make sure that all of that stays updated and current. And Chief, do you want to talk about?
Sure. And another requirement under this pillar is, specific to the police department, is the ongoing annual training for law enforcement officers in response to single officer response and active shooter response training. And we already have it scheduled, so all of our 10-month employees come back in August, that first week, we hold that training. And then we also work with our local law enforcement partners since we are not a full-service agency in working with critical incidents like that throughout the year.
Thank you, sir. 4.3.2, we're implementing advanced reporting and compliance systems to uphold safety standards and prepare for accreditation and compliance requirements. We'll talk a little bit about our quarter four requirement. During quarter four, we had five schools inspected by the state, three schools passed with no violations. We had no major violations at any of our schools. We want to shout out to Garden Elementary, Venice Middle School, and Woodland Middle School for passing with zero compliance deficiencies. All of our schools that were inspected this year that had deficiencies have now been re-inspected by the state, and all schools have passed without any deficiency. We're very proud about that. We'll come to you in quarter one of '25, '26 to go over the full year inspections. So that's our quarter four update. With that also, we have been introduced kind of to new threat management software by the state of Florida. This is also a statutory requirement that all threat management teams inside the schools use the Florida Model Threat Management Software that will open on August 4th, and all of the threat management teams will be required to start using that on day one. So that's a challenge. Michael Santagata and Swetzel, our two district threat management coordinators, are doing an amazing job of trying to put together a good training plan to make sure all of our school-based teams are ready for that new software. We also have some requirements that are changing with House or Senate Bill, excuse me, 1470, that has brought back some of the 1473 requirements. It's defined when we have to have those 1473 times at minutes before the school day, up to 30 minutes after the school day. And we're working very hard to make sure that all of our schools will be charter and traditional will be ready for that change. Chief? Audit evidence?
And the compliance requirements is working towards accreditation for the law enforcement side of the House. And although we don't have a dedicated person to work specifically on accreditation issues and updating policies, we are working internally with the staff that we had. One major part of that that we did this year was partnering with FDLE, and they came as free of services, they brought five of their professionals, especially within the evidence section, and they audited our evidence, basically all the critical items within our evidence, police evidence locker area. And we passed with 100% compliance with that. They did provide some recommendations that I've shared with the superintendent in how we move forward and improve in that area for the next few years.
4.2.3, our, yes, establish clear crisis communication systems and protocols for communicating with students, staff, parents, and the broader community during emergencies of, say, incidences. I know that we have several different systems in place. What we have within safety and security, we use Raptor Emergency Management to make sure that communication is going on between staff and the teachers inside the classroom to make sure everybody is aware of what's going on. We'll talk a little bit about our radios now. All of our schools in Sarasota County are compliant with NFPA regulations. We're one of the only school districts in the state of Florida that has met that requirement on time. We're very proud of that. We are reprogramming all of the radios in Sarasota County this summer to add in the schools that we are bringing online. Sky Ranch, being a shelter school, will be added to the frequency of every school radio in the district. So when staff are assigned at Sky Ranch, they'll be able to communicate without any problems. This also gives our district staff the ability to communicate with any school, no matter where they are in Sarasota County. And we are in the process of redoing all of our different emergency protocols and procedures at a school and a district level. 4.3.4, we're providing ongoing training opportunities for staff, including emergency response training, crisis intervention techniques, conflict resolution strategies, to ensure that our staff are equipped to address safety concerns effectively. We are doing training inside of new professional development system where we'll offer classes all year long for staff to take online to review safety and security procedures and protocols, also to go into our different safety and security systems so that they are always comfortable with the things that we're providing them. We are working with communications right now on a new video that'll be internal only for staff to watch that also goes over all of our different procedures, all of our five different responses that we do through the standard response protocol with the I Love You Guys Foundation and our different systems so that they have a visual of what is out there for them and how to properly use it during different emergency scenarios. We have a security team that we will send out for drills. We will do our best to hit every school in the district this year to have them drill more like it's realistic, where if they're doing a lockdown, the staff has to lock down and use the systems that we provide them so they can see what it's like, how to talk to their staff, how to go through their chin procedures and all of that through the safety and security systems that they have if they're locked down in somewhere other than their office or they're stuck in an area outside of the school. This gives them the opportunity to really see what it's like in an emergency when they are locked down or they have to evacuate and they don't have everything right there at their fingertips. We are doing, we're very proud, we're doing reunification training this year on July 14th. We have the I Love You Guys Foundation coming in, and they will be doing a full reunification training for our district reunification team, as well as members from each school site, including charters. We've also invited first responders to come to that training. We're going to use this training with our first responders as our first introduction to each other and start working on tabletop exercises in our goal with Chief Ruiz. And the emergency operations center is to have a full-scale exercise at the end of 2026. We're very excited about that. I'll turn the rest over to Chief, Comply, our PD.
And so, talked a little bit about the active shooter training that we do, but also the state manages that all officers have CIT training, crisis intervention training, but specifically, there's one for SROs. And then so we, not only once a year in August when all our staff comes back fine, but throughout the year when we hire people on things like that, we ensure that they get that training right away. So we have that training scheduled in August, the SRO-specific CIT training. And as we go through the year and see if there's new folk coming on, that they get that as soon as possible.
4.3.5 is to improve stakeholder support with timely and efficient fingerprinting services, focusing on quality and responsiveness. Our fingerprint office is an amazing office. We have incredible employees. They go above and beyond on a daily basis. It has become standard practice for them. This year, we have added two mobile stations, and we are working hard on bringing up the security or the fingerprinting from the state Florida Department of Law Enforcement over to the ACHA clearinghouse. ACHA is the Agency for Healthcare Administration. This year alone, we have fingerprinted over 8,081 people. And just since April, outside of that, we have fingerprinted 798 employees and moved them from the FDLE system over into the new clearinghouse, and we've fingerprinted 83 subs. This will be ongoing for the next three years as we are required to re-fingerprint every employee in the district, and we have two more years to get all of that.
Thank you. The next one is 4.3.6, modernize intrusion detection systems. We have been installing combo IP cell dialers in all of our systems. This has been in conjunction with IT. As Verizon and Frontier start dropping pots to left copper lines, we have to make changes to be able to communicate going to IP or cellular because we, intrusion systems do not because we, intrusion systems do like to communicate on VoIP. The transmissions go through, so we can't just jump onto our standard VoIP system. We have to put in an IP dialer or a cell dialer. New intrusion detection systems is an underway process. We are evaluating constantly. That is a big lift for the district when that choice is ever made. After COVID with chip shortages and other things, a lot of manufacturers changed gears, midstream systems that were then eliminated and new directions were made by manufacturers. So that is still ongoing process with us trying to figure out which way we want to go with a newer system down the road. Like we talked in our last, our last get-together, Omni Alert rollout for elementary schools. All we're waiting on now is some final testing to be online with our elementary schools with Omni Alert Weapon Detection System. So that's good news. The next section is 4.3.7, implement district-wide walkthrough weapon detection screening system. Good news on that, we are completely rolled out. We have two asterisks on that. Is Sarasota High is getting, had major fencing and construction going on. So it was kind of a, the implementation era was a little bit slowed down. And STC, Polytech, there was some fencing stuff had to go on there. Oak Park will be rolling out in about a week. So we will be completely through with secondary schools up to start of the school year, ready to go. Oops, did I go too far? 4.3.8, strengthen security district-wide access control measures and comprehensive rekey initiative. 473, in July, we came, Safety Security installed a lot of Aphones at all the high schools. That was our rollout for their port. We also rolled that out district-wide. That came to 18 schools and 63 Aphone locations. We proud to say we also have a GGMK key in every one of our LEO key boxes. So we're up on that as well. Access control installed to support the Aphone and usage of a proxy card hall pass system for elementary schools. Primarily, we, nine schools, 700 cards. So it's a big lift. Rekey at some schools under construction is where we're lacking with finishing rekey. We rolled those into the reconstruction remodel projects. That would be Sarasota High and Northport High. Single point of entry at NSL is underway. That'll be our last school to have a secured front single point of entry. So we'll be all good there district-wide. And then we have ongoing access control projects several this summer. And that's going to be one of these ongoing things for us is continuing to add access control in locations where needed. 4.3.9, up signage across all facilities to a universal standard to aid first responders and meet best practices. Our new school layouts kind of really forced or dictated, we get into this a little bit heavier than we ever wanted to. We have standard for labeling fences and gates, building locations, and interior stairwells, exterior stairwell access points. We are rolling those into all of our new construction projects. So anything's being built, it's going to have that into it. And then we will be able to roll that into as a standard. So any responder shows up to whatever school, there's a standard. They look at the school, the signage is the same. They get inside the school, the signage is the same. And it also helps them be able to maneuver and get to respond faster. 4.3.10, maintain partnerships with law enforcement and manufacturers to enhance camera accessibility functionality. Last year, we undertook a proof-of-concept integration with Northport PD into their FUSESS system. That has been completed. Elementary school Omni Alert rollout, providing that access to the PIS apps. If they choose to have it, we can give it some don't. We can provide that also to them. So as soon as we have an actual weapon activation, they have that information right then and there. What's ongoing for us is the Omni Alert rollout for the middle, high schools, and special schools, which will be starting this year. And then we still have ongoing camera upgrade refreshes as part of our standard five-year.
All right, 4.3.11, which is regularly. Regularly evaluate recruits to boost state exam pass rates and improve police academy outcomes. I reported last, last time we met, that last academy graduated in December, passed with 100% rate. We just had an academy graduate last week and take the state test. And they also passed with a percent rate, which is something that hasn't been seen here in quite so many years. And so the work that the people in the academy have been doing a great job working with. We have a lot of instructors that work for the school district, but also we partner with law enforcement agencies to provide instructors. And then just the additional study time, especially during last academy that there has a lot of challenges going through the hurricanes and can't study days. It was pretty a big feat for them, so I'm proud of that. 4.3.12, overhaul police radio systems to the latest N70 model to ensure compatibility and interoperability with other first responder units. So our radio systems, our police radio systems right now are effective, but they're supposed to be phasing out in technology in the next five years or so. So we started the new N70 radio, is that new compatible radio. We have about 15 radios on hand now. And we're working, obviously with the rest of the district team to roll that out in the next few years. Obviously with budget in mind, but to do it in a process where it impacts the budget as little as possible. But it's something that we're going to need to do. I want to add to that though, so we had two big upgrades in technology related to the police department this year, and that is the CAS system, the sheriff's office. We use their CAS system, they dispatch for our officers. And so we're integrated into their CAS system where we receive calls for service and where our officers are. And so we are part of that upgrade, we are part of that. And that's up and running as of like about a month ago. And we also updated our report management system, which is separate from that, where officers make reports and forward things to the state attorney's office into more of a cloud-based system. And it's a lot more effective. So those are two big improvements this year. 4.3.15, pursue Florida law enforcement accreditation to validate the district's adherence to professional standards. I'm a big on accreditation. I'm actually a creditor for Kalia, which is a national creditor. And I'd be supportive of this. I think it'd be an awesome thing for our department moving into the future. Like I said earlier, we don't have an accreditation manager dedicated to accreditation like most departments have, but working with our supervisors and just we're updating policies as we can. As I said earlier, we worked with FDLE to get an audit done for our evidence room. And as we move forward and like the superintendent's talked about, we can have a staff study to really help us reorganize the organization in order to meet the current standards in the near future. And with that, that completes our strategic plan update. And we will take any questions now from the board.
Any questions? Mrs. Barker?
Thank you. Thank you all very much. This was wonderful, very helpful. I just have two fairly small questions. First, you talked about the handle with CARE. Are you referring to the verbal and physical de-escalation program? That's nationwide or are you talking about something else? You were talking about handle with CARE.
So it is the nationwide program, but it's also, we're using it here for if students are in any type of crisis event, that law enforcement feels like they need extra counseling. They're letting us know. Again, they don't go into specifics because they're not allowed to, but we are able to tag it, make sure the counselors at the school know so that the kids get the information or the care that they need.
Okay. Once upon a time, I was certified in handle with CARE. So I was like, gosh, that's still around. Okay, do we, do any of that handle with CARE training with our staff? Or do we use a different de-escalation model for our ESE classrooms, do you know?
No, we don't use the old handle, or I don't mean old, but the.
It is old.
Handle with CARE model. We use what we have today already in place inside the schools through the crisis training that our counselors get. But it's more, or this particular instance, it's more for kids that maybe aren't the facilitator of the anger and things, but might have had that brought to them. And so we have, we have different programs that we use for our students of concern. But these are more maybe students that are victims or they saw their parents get arrested or things along those lines within that program that we're bringing extra attention to that they might not get outside in the community.
So it's a way to kind of help make sure students don't fall through the cracks?
Yes, ma'am.
Love that, love that. Thank you.
Ms. Barker too, sorry to interrupt you. We use mindset too for de-escalation with ESE.
Great, great. Okay, yes, because I'm not old, old, but I'm getting there, getting a little long in the tooth. Okay, and then the other quick question I had was, you were talking about the proof-of-concept merger with the Northport PD being part of their cameras. And I was just wondering, how did that go? Is that something that we want to expand to our, you know, the sheriff's department? Or, you know, what was the outcome of that proof-of-concept?
So right now, that was with, Northport has a real-time crime center that they started a year or so ago, utilized a system called FUSESS. Not every other agency who has a real-time crime center uses the exact same manufacturer for that process. Our main purpose of really moving forward with the proof of concept was to see the utilization it had on our existing camera system and how it impacted the things we wanted to do with our camera system that we paid for since that's, we had a lot of plans to move forward. And if we were doing something with other proof of concepts or other agencies and doing inter-agency access into our systems, how would that degrade our capabilities to do what we wanted to do? So we tried it at one school just to see how that process would go before we gave Northport, all of the Northport schools for access for FUSESS.
And how did it go?
They're having more issues on their end. We provided them the access. There was a lot more legwork on our side, I will say, than what was sold to Northport per their manufacturer. We facilitated all those, but they are, I think they're having a little more issues on their end with their FUSESS integration piece.
Got it. Thank you.
But in relation to that, I would say, I would add, yes, we would like to partner with any agency as far as in sharing whatever we can, barring how it affects our systems. But obviously, we want the law enforcement departments who will be responding to an emergency to have access to those things and understand what's going on for better, you know, collaboration and really square the situation quickly, so.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Ms. Edwards?
Just for clarification, I will always ask budget questions. And the reason why is I think it's important for me to understand, as well as the public, to where sometimes the budget intersects with classrooms and unfunded mandates and all those kinds of things. So I will always ask those. And I have a whole set of questions specific to when we get to the budget. Along those lines, you speak about the threat management software and the expense that is, is there expense to that software, number one?
No, sir.
Okay. And the training for that software, is there expense to that? Because you did mention about the two folks scrambling to get that training in order and then making sure we're ready for when schools open.
The state will provide video training at the state's cost. The, our expense will be personnel that will be assisting with that training and then kind of following through for the next few months as we get used to the software, making sure that things are being done correctly. We're not expending any money directly for training other than personnel expense.
Great. And the reprogramming of radios and the re-fingerprinting, I know that they're not necessarily the same issue when we have new schools. But I think that the expense of opening a new school and something as subtle as reprogramming as radios that we might not normally think is a big deal. But when you open new schools, you have teachers, you have extra power, you have, I mean, it just escalates. And quite frankly, I get questions all the time about the need for opening new schools. Did we really need to? Which is a whole separate end to, none of us here were responsible for those votes, but we're certainly responsible for the executing of those openings and the associated expenses. So the reprogramming of radios, is that a large expense?
We went ahead and with, worked with planning and we're reprogramming the radios for the next three schools that we anticipate opening. So it was just right at $1 million for about 3,500 radios across the district. But we've upgraded the system and we will not have to reprogram again as those costs go up for the next three to five years, depending on the five-year plan is that the board sets.
Got it. And then lastly, the fingerprinting expense, that was statutorily was brought to us to do that?
Yes, sir. That was passed, I believe, back in 2019 that all school districts move into the clearinghouse. The deadline date had changed up until it became April of this school year. That was one of those unfunded mandates that we are having to absorb. And the district is absorbing that cost for each employee.
Thank you. Let me just say that I know I do ask those questions, not so much because of challenging you. I know you guys really do keep a hard line of trying to keep our expenses down and you understand that the money that we spend in security perhaps can be better spent in a classroom. But it's, you know, we have to have safe schools in order to have safe instruction. So I get your challenge. I just think it's important for the public to know when we get those challenges. And frankly, they're not often always leveraged or onto our charter partners. And we absorb those kinds of expenses, but our competitors do not.
Mrs. Ziegler?
Thank you very much. Well, if you get this and you ever really compare even with the mandates that state, the state of Florida has where other states don't have that, because it is pretty jarring when you think about the schools in other states that have, single point of entry is like a really nice to have, but no one has it. So it's fantastic to hear that we are at the conclusion of that. That was this board's vision, really, it has been really embedded into this district even before the horrible catastrophes that really drew forward a lot of the legislation being Parkland. But, you know, single, best practices of single point entry and having ID, all those variables. But there's no question when you look through this. And so I want to applaud you guys because you guys are the top of the game. You guys do know stuff. You're always bringing innovative items to us. Safety and security is something you guys eat, breathe, sleep. And we are grateful for it and our families and staff should really, really understand that. Where I feel like when I, everything is budget compared, like everything, especially right now, we're right in it. Every single thing that's being said, whether it be reading or safety, security, it's like, how much is this costing? Is this going to get to where we need to go? So I say this out there for the, just it's the reality. And it's really hard when you think safety and security. And in my world of insurance and risk consulting, you would meet with businesses that had many, many zeros on their balance sheet, but they still had to make those, you know, what is, you know, is the juice worth the squeeze? Does this, what's the risk factor? And that's where I really feel like we are right now because you want to, and I really will say, and if Mr. Enos was here, something I think he takes pride in, I do as well. I mean, we really have always emphasized safety and security. And that's something I know Mr. Edwards says is this is something that this board's almost always in lockstep about. And I want, I can't underscore that enough. And so I don't want my statements to diminish my true respect for everything you guys do because then we have to look at it from a financial impact component. And when I think about it just from an aggregate, so much of what you guys talk about, it makes complete sense, is infrastructure. And if I think of like, gosh, the radio, the fingerprinting, I mean, that to me is an infrastructure of a system for safety and security for entire, you know, enterprise. And because technology changes so vastly and a lot of our safety and security expenses really are kind of combined. They're not in one said district. I know superintendent's probably had me ask a million times, like, how much if we were going to save per student do we spend on safety and security? It's very difficult. And I understand that because it's embedded into infrastructure planning, long-range planning, communications, IT, all of that. And where I'm going with that is I look at some of the stuff that we, I know the radio frequencies, having to change, the rekeying project, all of those have very large expenditures. But then there's this change of technology, whether it's a new mandate that came and then even if we were given some additional runway with the fingerprint or now I have written down the crisis communication system. I mean, there's so many platforms. They change so much. How do we manage that? I mean, it's, in my mind, it's a long-range planning investment. And I don't know if this is more appropriate for Dr. Kemp or future workshop. But to me is, you guys are coming to us with really great advice and good ideas and some that have taken us a couple of years to execute on. And the irony is that by the time we probably had the stomach to execute on that, it's already changed. already changed. Nothing that Joe, Mr. Binsver or our IT team is not unfamiliar with, right? That's just the reality. And so when I think of the expenses assigned to whatever it is when it comes to safety and security, it embeds so much in our long-range planning components, and I have to assume, with your expertise, you know what that kind of refresh rate looks like. And are we getting, are we capitalizing on that in our contracts? Are we, like, are we having to start from ground zero every three years? And how are we really looking at it from that perspective? Because I don't think anyone up here wants to ever say, we have to cut in safety and security, because God forbid. I mean, that's like, it gives me goosebumps thinking about it. It's almost like, anytime we add something, you got to know it's in here for perpetuity, because the likelihood of saying, someone feeling that they have the foresight to say, we have to pull back here in security, it's very unlikely. But when I look at like accreditation, and I think it's fantastic, so I don't want to take that away, but then we have to like, balance that out over here. We are in a full-edged law enforcement agency, as was said, and we're very fortunate to have partners, but every post-after-action report with the most horrible situations, it comes down to communication, almost every single time, people knowing the, I mean, all the things that you went through here are literally coming off of after-action reports where things didn't go well. And so I don't diminish that. But my broader question, and again, it's probably not going to respond right now, but when we think about budgetary and where we're going, I think there's about three or four different things on here that either currently ongoing or we're restarting over, just because of the changing of technology. And I'm talking about five-plus years. That's where I bring in the long-range thing, like, strategy. I think that's what we have to, if we're not, we have to look at it that way. If we are, I just would like to know what that looks like, similar to a capital improvement plan, when we think of infrastructure that embeds safety and security. So, but again, I don't want that to diminish from anything you guys do, you guys do great work. We have that hard part where we got to figure out really some really tough things ahead of us, and I want to look at it from a multi-year perspective at this point, where I don't know, we have looked at it that way, at least been from a presentation to the board. So I appreciate everything you guys do, though. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Many of my questions have been answered, that the software is mandated, and fingerprinting is mandated, and the rekeying is mandated. And I just find that there's a lot of redundancy, and it's costing the district a lot of money. And you don't have any control of that at all. So I think when we're looking at less money coming from the legislature and still more unfunded mandates that come down, that, and it's also the time involved. We talked about time in the science of reading, our reading comprehension plan, so here's more time. The one position that I heard you mention over and over were our counselors. So they're involved in all of this, and that's time, and with less money. So I just find that you all do such an incredible job. We want our staff and students, safety is paramount. Everybody does an excellent job, and in spite of what comes down the pike from the legislature and DOE. And I guess that's all of our issues that we've got to deal with, and how do we keep? But it would be nice if there wouldn't be so much redundancy all the time. Once you get a thing done, then we got to do it all over again. And my answer would be why? So, and I know it's new computer programs, but thank you all very much. Any more questions?
Just to close it, thank you, team. I'd like to move the conversation around. I know there's interest, we've had some conversation with each of you around the time now to do an independent study of our police department and what we believe would give us some valuable insights. You know, we've had this police department, and we're one of very few school districts that operate a school police department, that since 2018, there really hasn't been an evaluation, an independent study to know, how are we doing? What are the things that we're doing well in? Where are some gaps and areas of opportunity? And get some recommendations from a third party. So I did out a request for a letter of interest, and we received about six applicants for that, two that really stood out in terms of what they would be able to potentially offer us in collecting data and evaluation and has the experience in school policing. Of that, the one that kind of rose to the top, and definitely from a financial aspect, was the best value was the School Safety Advisory Council. And I know we've had some individual conversation about that, so I just want to open up the floor about your recommendation, whether we should move forward with that, and any insights that you have as a board.
Can you talk a little bit about the process that we used to select, you said, the top contender?
Yep, absolutely. So we had six entities that applied, some were there academic, so that we had some colleges like USF and FSU, and we had some other organizations that have had experience in doing this work, whether it be with municipalities or other school districts. So of those six, that was, went through our typical RFP process, where, you know, we have a team of individuals who independently rate the application process. We did, I believe, even above and beyond kind of our normal protocol, in that we had two sets of interviews. And so when we got through those interview processes, it really came down to the value of what they were offering in terms of the financials and what objectives they would be accomplishing. That's how we ended up with the two. Some were pretty exorbitant in prices, ranging up to $400,000-plus dollars and to as low as about $50,000. And so that's just on the financial, but then in terms of the actual requirements and objectives we want to accomplish during the evaluation, the two that rose up here were 21st Century Policing Solutions and the School Safety Council, just based on their experience in this work and for the value. We felt that this could be a potential recommendation that we could bring forward.
And you said it was the School Safety Advocacy Council that was the top scorer there?
That is correct.
Okay. And what is the financial impact of that?
I believe it is just over $50,000, $52,000, I believe, is what the initial. Now, I don't know if there will be some negotiation that could occur as a result, if we do engage with this partner, if there's any potential additional savings that we could see.
And we chose the School Safety Advocacy Council over 21st Century, based mostly on a value proposition?
Mostly on a value. I think 21st Century was very strong in their presentation, in the summary that I received from the team who reviewed that, and they had very good experience, a lot of it outside of Florida. And I think that was one of the differences between the two, is that there was some more experience with the Safety Advocacy Council. But the 21st Century had a good proposal, their cost was about three times.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Mr. Edwards?
So there's a couple of things that I just want to throw out, that I know there's always this question that's asked, should we have our own in-house SRO department? Should we partner with outside organizations? I'm a fan of keeping it all in-house. I mentioned at our last school board meeting that we had this wonderful ceremony, but it wasn't just the ceremony, it was the representation of how well our SROs are integrated into our classrooms, into each school, not just by familiarity, but the kids really get the right kind of conversations in pre-K all the way up through 12th grade. And I think that we've thwarted many situations that we might not have been able to address had those relationships not been firmly in place. And because of that, I want to say that that's my very strong personal opinion. In addition to that, we've done literacy overhauls, we've done ESE overhauls, we've had outside folks come in and give us great ideas and suggestions. We have audits all the time financially, so I'm going to put that $50,000 in a bucket and think that having outside ideas and suggestions of how to enhance our organization is money well-spent, especially around safety and security.
Mrs. Ziegler?
Thank you very much. I, too, have been one that was, as has always, continuously been opened to an outside review. I think that a lot of the things I just said in the prior comments is that, you know, we are not, we are an education institution, and that, you know, being an independent law enforcement agency, are we not, nor are we trying to be. But I was here when the creation of it was, and it was bumpy, and it was concerning, and there, in my mind, from a business decision, it was much more on an emotional and responsive, and there was very, very little cost-benefit analysis done. And when you open any kind of department, we talk about the same thing when we talk about legal, like, do we do inside, do we outside? There are a lot of valuations that need to be considered, and so candidly, I've always supported this component. I'm very grateful, and as I said in the comments before, I mean, I think that despite the bumpy creation and the very, it was an interesting time, I will just say that, but it has landed in a really good place, and that makes me very happy. Because after that decision was made, despite where I stood before, that I would say, okay, if we're going to do this, we got to do it right. And then there's that constant conversation of, you know, how much are we spending? I just said that, right? And then, you know, are we doing the right thing? Do we have oversight on these policies? I love one piece I wrote down that I didn't get to in the last comments, where the FDLE came in and did a free audit. Ding ding. Now, but I understand there's limitations when you have someone coming in, and it's also, you know, there's, you really want an independent, you know, review. Without going into, I will say, I strongly, I strongly believe in this, but I also want to know whoever we're picking is going to provide value and not less, cause any unnecessary or unforced errors, or pain, or things that we can avoid. Or do I think our financial impact, can our budget can sustain that hit right now? Those are the kind of the ways I'm looking at it. I will say that superintendent and I have had this conversation a couple times about just the review process, where we are, and then where it landed, and what could we afford. I do believe independent is very important. I have concerns, candidly, about one that may be bubbling up to the top for the sheer fact that there are some elements that are very deeply embedded with very strong personal opinions with one of the owners of that organization. And I think that for the, not just for the board, but for the public, to have a really good sense of whatever comes into that after that audit, which, by the way, it's not the $50,000, it's, there's additional costs, because it's going to be a process where you're reviewing with staff. So that's staff time away from all the other things. So that's just the direct cost, there are indirect costs. And then the indirect cost that I don't want to have is that we have people who, and I may be very, I'm concerned, and I've made this very candid, about the very political nature of one of the senior officers or owners, I don't know what the position is, and I'm not going to go into naming, but I have a concern with it. I think if the script was flipped, that would be a rightful situation and questions to be asked, is this the right firm that's going to give this board, who all pretty much agrees in the value of having an outside opinion, look in? But then it comes to the firm, and I do not feel comfortable, and I don't want to go, I mean, if it goes to the point where I'm outnumbered, and I will just say, I'm saying this, and if I looked at this on both sides of the aisle, or whatever, when you work in private sector, whatever it is, and you want to pitch public entities, you better make sure your leaders aren't out there, you know, making very, it's like, you know, derogatory comments, whether you agree with them or not, against the board of which they would potentially be presenting for. I think that's a problem, that undercuts their ability to be seen and independent, whether they can claim they are or not, whether that person's involved or not. I think it's an, I think it stinks, but listen, I'm a very politically outspoken person, I also worked in private sector. I knew that there were areas that I would not be able to go and ask for their business. I knew that. It's just the reality of doing business. So I'm as closely as much saying as where I'd stand, if this does make it to the actual final board, I think it's a mistake. I think it will, it's not something, I think there's a lot out there that will quickly turn it into not worth the time and effort. Despite my initial feelings of the value of this, of having an independent, but then we got to get down to, if that's the case, is the time right, and are the firms right? And I don't feel that that's the case right now.
Thank you, Mrs. Ziegler. Well, I agree with collectively what my fellow board members have stated. I think we do need outside evaluation. I think it's going to be good, and it would be irresponsible of me not to, when we're talking about budgeting, looking at difference of our own versus contracting out like we did before. I've worked, had pleasure working with both. So I think the, you know, the comment about making sure that our officers are there that connect with the students, working with both, I've seen all, our office, whether they worked with the sheriff's department, the city, Northport City, Venice, they all connected just like our own, all connect. That is key. So to me, that's not even a talking point. But I think when we pick the firm, I have had no dealings with one, and back in my previous role, I have had dealings with the other, one of the other owners of the firm. And I have to say, at that particular time, it was very positive. But I do know whoever we choose needs to leave the political stuff out. It's not appropriate to the drawing board. The politics has to be left out. We're dealing with children. And so whatever one we do, that needs to be the message that comes across, safety of our children and safety of our staff. So I will leave it at that. Any other comments or questions, Ms. Barker?
I'm just piping back in here, because I honestly am not terribly politically involved, and I did not know about a connection between one of the owners. What I did know is that one of the firms is embedded in our community, and one is a more outside firm. So I am, and I realize that the out-of-state firm is significantly more expensive, and I'm really just kind of hashing this out in my own head, does it make sense to take on that expense in the hopes that they truly bring a fresh, different perspective that we cannot access in our own community? Or does it make sense to utilize the local knowledge that this community member has? And I don't know, but I'm just asking as a question that may be something to think about, for what it's worth.
I do know that, I have been assured that one of the, I guess, one of the owners who is not, I think the one you're referring to would be the lead on the project. Not that the other one wouldn't have involvement, but obviously, because there's a local context there, right? But that I do know. All right. So I can, it looks like we'll have continued conversation about where we go from here. I appreciate the input. I think it's good that we at least have that conversation and know, as we continue to look for ways to improve in the realm of safety and security, that there definitely is an appetite for us to have a third-party external evaluator come in, provide us some recommendations. I do believe, again, I do agree with Mr. Edwards, that this is not in any way, shape, or form to suggest that there should be a change in the way that we do school policing, but more ways to improve what we've already got existing, because we are doing some amazing things in this realm of safety and security. And it always continues to be in the forefront, you know, even as high as the academics, right? Because if the kids aren't safe, you know, the teaching really doesn't take the priority, right? And so I appreciate what our school police has done and what they will continue to do. I look forward to doing an independent review, because just like when I got here and we completed ESE review, it was kind of a gift that was handed to me in my lap as the new superintendent, because it came with some third-party recommendations that we've really done some amazing work in helping revamp and improve in that area as well. So we'll have continued conversation, and then I will look forward to bringing, I believe one or the other entities is, they're great, it's just a matter of what the board wants to do in terms of the evaluation, and we'll have that conversation at our next board meeting, or a future one, very soon.
Mr. Edwards?
Yeah, one quick question. In terms of actual board, isn't there a cutoff amount of money that we give you in terms of, I can make this choice myself? What is that amount?
It is $50,000.
So...
And this is just over that.
Also, I want to say that politics, whether it was self-induced by board members or by community members, has been... community members, has been, we've had to slice and dice that many times. As much as I agree with Mrs. Marinelli, that we would, on a proactive kind of measure, say, please make sure this doesn't enter into our conversation. But I just want to be very clear that I'm happy to have that conversation, also with you in our one-on-ones, but from a public standpoint, if we could get them to 49.5, we might be able to, you make that call.
Mrs. Ziegler?
Thank you. It's funny you say that, Mr. Edwards, because I believe that, that was probably discussed in, in the, in the, to err on the caution of ensuring that it doesn't fall afoul of unnecessary, unforced errors, that knowing this causes certainly one board member some concern. And I, and it's not about what, it's about what behaviors were in the past that will in fact likely come about, and so I don't want that to be something, I'd rather be transparent and people own it, and not have something that the superintendent has to, have to, has to grapple with unfairly, quite frankly. I don't think that's fair. I think that's setting you up for not success. I think there just has to be a transparent conversation. If, if that behavior, because I, and I think these are the things that do come up a lot. And unfortunately, yeah, we're at a time, well, fortunately or unfortunately, I don't really care. People have their opinions, but there is this, you know, when you deal with businesses, that's something that has to be considered, and that's it. And that's up to, I guess, each board member, or whether or not that's something we even think is worthwhile, given all the other things that we have to evaluate.
Any further questions or comments? So we'll continue discussing our one-on-ones with you, Superintendent Connor, and then we'll decide as a board what we want to do. So thank you. And I want to reiterate too, you've heard all of us board members, and that you have our 100% support. So even though you might feel that little angst when I say, or any others, you know, we've got to look at the dollars, that's also a protection for you too. So don't take that like, you know, you're out the door, because that is not the intent at all. We know you have a wonderful relationship with our schools, our students, our parents feel safe sending their kids to school, and that's the number one thing, and that they are. So thank you all for what you do. Please pass that to all the officers and the staff, and thank you for your presentation. Okay, Superintendent Connor, number three, code of conduct and policies. So would you like to start?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair. So we're at that point. I know a few, one of our regular meetings, I think two meetings ago, we brought the code of conduct, which had an oversight in some of the, the language that was presented. And we took that back to our legal team, and under the guidance of Mr. Parento, and our academic intervention team with Kirk Hutchinson, and our legal counsel, we are bringing forth the revised language of the student code of conduct for your review and discussion today. That, with the intent of bringing the advertisement of the student code of conduct at our July board meeting. In conjunction with that, we felt it would be to our, it would be advantageous for us to bring all of the policies that are related to that, so that when we approve this process, everything is in alignment and agreement. So all of the, there are three distinct policies that are attached to discrimination, bullying, and harassment. And so we're going to bring forth today for discussion, the revisions to that, so that all of the language throughout these documents are in alignment and cohesive. And so you've had opportunities over the last couple of weeks to review those language, and we'll, I'll kick it over to Mr. Parento and Mr. Duggan to talk a little bit about those revisions, and then we'll have some discussion.
Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you, board members. As the superintendent mentioned, we really want this to be a cohesive process between these policies and the code of student conduct, which the board has to approve every year. And because of that, the policies really lead right into the code of student conduct, not just in this area, but in all areas of the code of student conduct. So we'll start with the policy revisions first. The first policy is policy 2.71. This is our policy prohibiting discrimination and harassment. We made a pretty significant overhaul to this policy to strengthen it, because originally, how it has been currently written is really just as a Title IX policy that only protects based on federal classifications. And we want this policy to be one that is based on school and district level violations as well, because not every instance of bullying, harassment, discrimination meets the threshold that would qualify as one of those federal categories. So the changes that we made was including information about those school and district level violations, covering every student and every staff member, as opposed to only including those that would be covered by state or federal regulations. We also restructured the hierarchy of information within this policy, revising some definitions and setting requirements for the school level violation investigations. We didn't have anything in the previous policy of what it looks like at the school level when a student tells an administrator or a staff member that they're being bullied, that they're being harassed, or anything like that. So we wanted to lay that out in this policy and make sure that it is clear, and adding additional information about notification to parents and guardians. Within the policy, we, we only currently had information about noticing parents that an investigation had begun. We didn't have anything in there about informing parents when the investigation was complete. Many of our schools and administrators do that anyway, but we wanted to put it out in the policy that it is required that they notify that parent on the same day that the investigation is complete. The next policy is policy 2.71A, and this is our discrimination and harassment complaint procedures. This is really the procedural document that just accompanies the previous policy that we discussed. So we removed certain duplicated information that's from policy 2.71, so that any future changes remain consistent between this document, the, the procedures that go along with the policy, and the code of student conduct. We also revised the titles of certain positions that were outdated within the policy, and including, again, that additional information about notification to parents or guardians. The third policy is policy 2.73. This is the Educational Equity Act, and this ties directly to state statute. This comes from Florida Statute 1,000.05, and the additions of this are in addition to what we have already outlined within the previous policy 2.71A. The legislature requires us to have this policy, so we wanted this policy to mirror what is in state statute and changes that have been made over the last few years. So we added and removed some language to align this policy exactly with that Statute 1,000.05. Which brings us to the code of student conduct and the proposed revisions that we are going to be bringing forward at a future board meeting to advertise and ultimately approve as we get into the start of the next school year. So the changes incorporate the items that we just discussed into Section 300.3 of the Code of Student Conduct, to ensure that all students and staff members are protected from discrimination every day that they're on our campuses, after school, before school, everything associated with it. As we look at our students and our staff, we wanted to make sure that our local school board policies and procedures provide the protections that are needed for every student every day. We also have to incorporate state law and administrative rule and federal law, and we feel like we have done that within these policies that drive right into the code of student conduct.
Okay, any comments or questions? Mrs. Barker?
I'm on fire going first today, goodness. I do have some questions. Can you clarify, I know we have the new proposed policy and the new, but for the, for the sake of the public, can you clarify exactly what we're changing? Because in the past board meeting, we had a lot of community input saying they felt like our queer and trans students were being targeted and, and pulled from this discussion, and we, you know, went back to the drawing board a little bit. So can you clarify for the sake of the community exactly what this change looks like, this overhaul looks like?
So really, the bulk of this overhaul is to make this school district specific, so that we talk, when we talk about violations for bullying, harassment, discrimination, that it starts at the school-based level, right? Nothing of a violation has to meet a federal threshold for our students to be able to have something investigated. As we look at our students and we look at our staff members, solely by being a student in our schools, or a staff member at our schools, they are protected students, protected staff members, regardless of what the state government or the federal government says, and, and whether or not something rises to the level of being a federal discrimination investigation violation. It's a violation of our school rules and our district policy for any student to be bullied, harassed, or discriminated against for any reason whatsoever.
Thank you. And I am so appreciative of this really being clear about school and district level violations, strengthening that and helping, it really gives a roadmap for our administrators and our teachers to know exactly what is and isn't acceptable. So, so please hear me say, I'm, I'm very appreciative of that. To be clear, we used to have a line that says, we do not discriminate based on sex, gender, race, sexual orientation, gender expression, and we no longer have that line, correct? We, we have encompassed all of those groups, calling them all students and staff. Is that a fair assessment?
So you are correct, we did remove singling out any individual classification, because this, this policy is all encompassing. It, it covers every classification that you could ever think of. As you, as you list out and enumerate different classifications, and federal administrations change, or state administrations change, and classifications get added or taken away, as we do it this way, and we look down the road, we don't ever want a student to feel like they are no longer valued because a classification gets added or taken away, and they think, oh, now I'm protected again, or now I'm no longer protected, or anything like that. This policy encompasses all of it. Every student, no matter what they, they may, may look like, or what their background may be, this policy protects every student in every one of our schools from discrimination or harassment. And if, if that does happen to them, if they are discriminated against, they are bullied, they are harassed, this outlines the roadmap of how that gets investigated, and what courses of action are taken if that is substantiated.
Okay. So we have removed the individual categories, and in, in hopes of including more students, being more inclusive. I guess my question is, why are we doing this now? Who asked for it? And what are we hoping to get out of it? Because I, I have done some research on other districts. We're all revising our student code of conduct. Every district in Florida has to revise their student code of conduct before the start of a new school year. And so in understanding that this was the recommendation from our legal team, I dug into that a little bit, and I looked at the districts that neighbor us, and I looked at some other districts that have a similar politically conservative majority, and are also mid-sized districts, and I was unable to find any district that was making this sort of change. And this is all publicly available information on board meeting agendas, but, so I have Charlotte County here, they just approved theirs on June 3, and they do still have, does not discriminate, and they include sexual orientation, gender status, or gender identity. I have Pasco County was put up on May 20, their student code of conduct, they still have a person's sex, including the person's sexual orientation or gender identity, and then their board policy also mirrors that. And then I have Seminole, which was June, oh, they're talking about it today, actually, just like us. They still have, they actually have a hate crime, that includes sexual orientation. We have Manatee, June 10, their board workshop, they updated their code of conduct, and they still have clearly written out, does not discriminate, including sexual orientation or gender identity. And then Orange County, I know, does not mirror us, but it was interesting to me, because in my conversations with Mr. Duggan, you referenced the executive orders and the Dear Colleague letter, and Orange County does address that under their Title IX section, where they did remove some of that language, but under their basic student discrimination policy, they still include sexual orientation and gender expression. So if this is a, if there's a legal reason that we're doing this, that I am not understanding, it appears to me that we are one of the only, if not the only, district who believes that there is a legal reason for us to be doing this. So, so my question is, why us? Why now?
So I'll let Mr. Duggan tackle that from a legal perspective here in just a minute, but I will say that because this is one policy that covers both students and employees, you're talking about two different federal regulations, with Title IX and Title VII. And because we wanted to make this policy more robust, and have it be both a Title IX, Title VII, and district-based violations policy, we did feel that it was best to make sure that we included everything about all students, anytime they're on campus, any protected classification, above and beyond what the, the federal government or the state government may say. And, and so I'll let Mr. Duggan handle the, the legal aspect on where this all sort of began.
Sure. So I can't speak for other districts. I don't know what their thought process is. I suspect a lot of those districts are what are known as Neola districts, which is, can be political. I don't know that to be the case, but I suspect that is one of the rationales for why they have not chosen to make these changes. I can tell you, we apply every year for federal aid, about 30 million of which comes from the US DOE. We make assurances and representations as a condition of receiving that aid, that we are in compliance with their protocols. So we're constantly looking at our policies to make sure we are compliant, to make sure we don't lose any of that funding, or get bogged down in a federal investigation, or, you know, those type of things. So I can tell you, it's my recommendation, after looking at the, the state of federal law and state law, to make these changes, it was my recommendation to do this, to make sure our policies are as compliant as possible, so we can avoid those negative repercussions and distractions.
And as a follow-up to that, is, there has been no new law passed requiring us to do this. It is your interpretation of the sort of legal landscape as it stands right now? Would that be a fair assessment?
So there has not been a new law. There has been a change in interpretation of what Title IX means over, since January, when the Washington administration took effect. There had been several, several federal executive orders issued, and a Dear Colleague letter that was issued in February of 2025, that basically says that we are to go back to the way it was prior to the most recent administration, that those regulations of the immediate preceding federal administration are, have been struck down, and are not to be followed, and we are to go back to the interpretation of the Title IX, the way it was under the first Trump administration. So with that in mind, we went and we looked at those regulations, and we decided to make these changes to make sure that our policies are consistent, not only with those, but also the policies that exist at the state level in the state of Florida, based on state statute and the accompanying Department of Education state rule that accompanies the state statute.
And during the first Trump administration, did our policy include sexual orientation and gender identity, or no? So I wasn't here then.
Well, I wasn't necessarily here then either. My understanding, it did, but that was a decision for that board at that time.
Okay. So, so our policy was the same during the first Trump administration as it was during the Biden administration?
Well, it might be a question for some of the board members who, yeah, so my understanding is, because I was not here, my law firm, nor I, were representing the district at that time, so I'm going off of what my belief is, rather than my firsthand involvement. But my understanding is, at that time, that board decided to include those protections, even though it probably was not required to do so.
So it wasn't required to do so, agreed. But is there any legal reason that we cannot include categories that are not included in federal and state law? Can we protect, as you're saying, this is specific to Sarasota, these are our kids, our families, our teachers, and we want it very specific for us. Is there any reason why we can't, as Saracens, provide additional protections over and above what the law requires?
Well, we're required to be in compliance with the federal regulations as a condition of re- of receiving that $30 million in aid. I don't have a crystal ball, I don't know how the US Department of Education would view non-compliance with their regulations, but my goal, when I'm advising you, is to put you in risk adverse situations, so you don't have to deal with those liabilities and those distractions. So, with that in mind, you know, we've written policies that are consistent with what the expectation has been set for us.
Okay. Thank you. To me, this appears to be politicizing a non-political issue, and the fact that we're sitting here discussing it is, is concerning to me when we have an enormous budget issue looming, that we, we really need to be on the same page about. And, and this is an opportunity for us to be divided and to pull into our own corners and, you know, it just doesn't set us up for success in these coming budget negotiations, that's concerning to me. And I, I just, I don't think fundamental rights of students should be a political issue at all, and it feels like we are making it a political issue, manufacturing an issue where one doesn't necessarily exist, or at least the rest of the state does not seem to believe that it exists. So, I will leave it at that right now. I'm very interested to hear what my fellow board members have to say, I'm interested to hear what the community has to say, I have an open heart and open mind, but at this point in time, I have grave concerns.
I would just like to interject something before I call on my fellow school board members. Going back to my previous life, when I was a district school board employee and I worked here at the district office, the Code of Student Conduct started in our department, Student Services, and we worked with everybody else and our attorney. And when this, the, the way the Code of Student Conduct was written, previously, I was at a loss because it was never, those categories were not included in that. It was more inclusive, like it is now. So, I asked our attorney, Mr. Duggan, to, to give me some background, because in that timeframe, that I was retired and became a board member, the Code of Student Conduct in this particular section changed. And it has become a political, we wouldn't be having this discussion if politics were not involved right now. And the differences between, I'm gonna just lay it right out here, Republican and Democrats and how, how this is addressed. But I don't know any individual that does not want any student to not feel safe. And that's what this policy does. Every student, every staff member feels safe. That's our job. Our jobs are not to bring the politics in, our jobs are to focus on children and staff. So, whatever we have to do when it makes policy, it has to align. That's why we have an attorney. So, everybody has, this is a hot potato and it's an emotional topic, and I recognize that. But we have to make decisions based on what our attorney makes. Doesn't mean we have to like it, but that's why we pay him, to keep us out of any trouble. It said at every public comment, every student, every day. I got it right here in front of me, every student, every day. Every ethnic group, everything is represented in this picture. Every student, every day. That's what this policy, the way it's been written, includes. So, I feel confident that this policy will, will do just that. Every student, every day. And if it's not, then it needs to be reported, and if incidents happen and it's not, then that principal and whoever else needs to be held accountable. Because no student, no teacher, no staff is to be bullied or harassed. That's the federal law, that's the state law, and that's what this board member expects. Okay. Mrs. Ziegler?
Thank you. So, I, I agree with the summation of what Mrs. Marinelli just said, and I appreciate the questions to Mrs. Barker, because I can see, and as I mentioned at the, at close of last meeting, was that, when kind of listening to the comments in Northport and then having the discussion, certainly, I know my, no one's intent, which should ever be that we're trying to target any, any, any student, any subcategory, or I don't know what the right framework of how to explain it, or identifiable element, or what have you, but I like where we've landed, because I think it's all encompassing, but I will take us through a quick summary from what I recall, and this, this area has certainly been revised and revised and revised, and some are as a response to federal regulatory, you know, executive orders, changes, and some, but the debate, whether we changed it or not, we're almost always prompted by an EO taking place, whether it be Obama, or to Trump, then Biden, then Trump, and I, of course, am well-known for bringing forward a Title IX exclusionary resolution. So, I am very equipped to have this conversation, but I don't want to say that it was anything I prompted, I think truly, I can speak to that, that I didn't call Patrick or anything like that, say, "Hey, we need to change this." I think that's the normal course of action when there's any kind of thing coming down. So, but I don't want to speak over that, I just wanted to articulate that was not, it wasn't something that Bridges, Ziegler prompted or anything of the sort, but there were indeed changes. But, I think it's important, so anti-discrimination policy is, had been changed, I want to go back to 2015, 1415, 15, I think, is when the Dear Colleague letter went out from President Obama. And at that time, I, I didn't prepare for this conversation, I don't have all the data to back it up, but if I best, my best recollection was the word sex versus gender, and at that time, our anti-discrimination policy, it included the word gender. And I remember we had, like, a whole task force go out, and do we add gender identity, gender expression, because that was the, there was a big push for that. And at that time, I think the conclusion was such that gender is gender, it's not sex, and I will, I will compel everyone today that they are not the same thing, but that's what we're here for. But, so it did in fact exist there, and it was never changed. Unfortunately, I will say, my experience over not just in Sarasota, but looking at other districts, that the anti-discrimination policy, there was a really concerted effort to alter the anti-discrimination policy across districts across the country, to expand and remove sex, use gender, and then add on isms or whatever. And then it continues, there was more and more being added. I don't need to tell anyone, but that has been case, been a very complicated area of policy that all of us have dealt with, and I will say, if I can bring it back to, regardless of certain elements that have in fact been responded to at the state level, whether we want to go into, and, because I, I understand where I've stood, and I do believe this, that board members locally feel compelled, if they don't align with it and their community doesn't align with it, on the executive orders, to say, you know, especially if your state and federal government are not in lockstep, which was, was the case when I brought forward the resolution. That being said, I, I've also dealt with the challenges this district has experienced with bullying and harassment, whether it came from, particularly on the employment side, which is where Title VII and Title IX differ. And over the course of time, I'm trying to, I, we can go down the divisive conversation, it's not my goal, but I understand it is, I'm not, I'm not here to say it isn't. But I can tell you where my goal is, and also historically, those two areas where they don't align under federal law and case, Supreme Court rulings on Title VII language and Title IX, it gets confusing and then it makes it very difficult. I think our goal is to certainly send the message, and I believe this, and trust me as somebody, now, I walked voluntarily into this lion's den, so I'm not claiming from a victim standpoint, but I can argue I've taken substantial harassment verbally, both here and online, and I don't want anyone to ever have to deal with that. And again, I, I am voluntarily in this position, that is not the case in other situations, and that is something I am adamantly agreement on, and I think we all are, that that behavior, any bullying or harassment, is unacceptable, I don't care how you categorize yourself, for every student and every, every employee, 100%. And so by the pure virtue of putting and listing them out, and yes, historically, I do understand, the 1964, you know, if you talk about where these really started, that is, I understand that, and that is absolutely unacceptable, and then as is anyone else, if we were to go out and down the list, I don't care if you're gay, I don't care if you're straight, I don't care if you, I don't, I don't care, you're not to be, you're not to be harassed, you're not to be bullied. And I, I will stand by that, I have said that all the time. I think that, I've asked the superintendent, because I want to make sure, if, if there is a concern with the response that we are changing this, so that people feel that we're trying to intentionally target anyone, that is not the case. And if that's found to be, that there's a trend of such, either in the past or as we move forward, we have to know about it, and we have to know with facts, real facts, and we have to make sure that that is a very clear statement, that the changes here are truly to make it a better policy, which I can say that I feel much better, because it isn't, it does include everyone at the school-based level, and then there are some legalities and procedural aspects that are listed out that do kind of differ, if you think about, like, the decision tree, I think about sometimes when you have to think about these, and it's very rare that we have in policy and procedure included, and it's because it's really a testament to how serious we take this and how serious it needs to be followed, and there were gaps before, quite frankly. And so, yes, I can respect the, the, the antec, the perspective, excuse me, that this may be a prompt to, from a political standpoint, I do not, I do not believe it is, I don't think it, I, I think the historical standpoint is important. I feel like it's been a tumultuous journey, but I feel very strongly that without, that we, the way we're approaching it, it's not just exclusively Title IX or what have you, it is our expectation as a district, yes, there are legal components to it, and that is listed by way of statute, because as was identified here, which way the wind blows and the administration blows, maybe that changes, and so these need to be revised and reviewed, should be on a regular basis anyway, but those are also, you know, different discussions that, I think this allows it a lot more stability. So, I hope that makes sense, I'm happy to answer more questions. Again, I try to veer away from the areas that I know are just divisive, but I don't think that this, I think this aims to bring it much more back to a comprehensive body of, we are all together, every student, every, like, every, every staff member, every student, and we stand by that. And the only way we can truly stand by that is actual enforcement of any abuses of that and take it very seriously, and, and I, I have my, you have my commitment in that, in that standpoint, absolutely unequivocally.
Mr. Edwards?
So, since I asked the question also, like, where did this come from? And it, it came in, I believe it was Mr. Duggan said that the possibility of funding being cut was the impetus of having the conversation and bringing this up, based upon the fact that in the most recent administration, the, there's a very public push on the removal of anything DEI. I also sat in, on this board when the State Department of Education threatened the removal of $12 million because of a temporary mask policy, when that particular board thought masks were in the best interest. They made a decision that they thought it would keep their, their district safe, their children safe, their staff safe, and the retaliation of that politicized policy was the potential removal of $12 million. Not only that, our local delegates voted for it, it was the Department of Education that saved that $12 million for us. And so, I can appreciate the lawyer in this particular case saying, perhaps we need to be proactive and make sure that our funding is not cut because of any policy that we inadvertently have in the protection and health and well-being of our students. And I find the one time I, actually, one of the times I agree with Mrs. Marinelli, we're talking about children in a school district. We're not talking about federal politicization, state policies that are arguing a very divisive issue, we are talking about children. I have sat here, I've been called a pedophile, I have, I mean, the ridiculousness of people coming in on both sides of that craziness, and you know who heard it? Adolescent children who are questioning themselves, their identities. Do you think all of those hair-on-fire conversations on both sides of the aisle have not affected the self-esteem and mental health and well-being of our children? And I, being a protected class, am proud to sit here as a role model to say, "You can transcend all of that. You don't have to own that bullying." But, that's only so much I can do as an individual. We have to do it as a community, as a school district, and as a country. Give it up for our children. And so, my final piece of this is, this whole removal of DEI is saying to our children, "Know your place." And I resent that. I want to lift them up. I want to give them every opportunity to make this a more perfect union, that's what we all signed on for, that's what we're about. So, here's my final suggestion. I'm grateful for the suggestions of any and every and all being capitalized, but I want to read you, I, I actually pulled, I don't make copies for everybody, because I'll just keep it to myself, but anyone can go on, "To the Equal Opportunity Commission." And here's the protected classes as they are currently written in our federal government. They cannot be discriminated, discriminated against on a person's race, color, religion, sex, including transgender status, sexual orientation, and pregnancy, national origin, age, which is 40 or older, disability, or genetic information. That, those are the federal protected classes that supersede whatever the state decides they might want to do, but those are the federal classes. I'm in love with the any and all, because God knows that they could add or subtract, but I'm in favor of adding just a small line in compliance with federal protected classes. Just add it. You don't have to list them all out, we don't have to go through anyone's hair being on fire with people at, being added or subtracted, just in compliance with the federal protected classes, and I think we have it covered. And students, if you're listening, I see you, and I wish you all the best, you do not need to be bullied, ever, for any reason.
Well, with that, anybody else have any comments? All right. Thank you.
So, just for moving forward, so the, I, I hear a recommendation, any objections to us adding that particular?
I have no objection.
All right. Excellent. So, we'll, we'll make those revisions, did you want to add one more thing?
So, what we have in here, it says, "The term unlawful discrimination encompasses any unlawful policy, practice, conduct, or other unlawful denial of rights, benefits, or privileges that is based on any legally protected status or classification under applicable state and federal law or local rule. The district shall fully comply with the Florida Educational Equity Act, FS 1000.05, Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972, and Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964."
Is that, is that our attorney, Mr. Duggan, is that, is that?
I think that, well, I think that that would cover the request that was just made. I think that language is, is in there already.
Okay. All right.
From my perspective, I would just say, I, I would take state out of it, it's always federal, it's always federal. And I don't want to end up back at here, because there, there's a state mandate being, that's going back and forth. We always comply with, we, certainly, that's your job, to look at any, making sure that we're in compliance, but the federal always supersedes state.
Mrs. Ziegler?
Yeah, no, I, I'm sorry, I don't want to split hairs, but I think that there are, yes, there is a, there is a hierarchy of just general constitutional, you have all, that applies to everything that we sign and adopt, and am I wrong?
Yeah, I think some of the confusion here is, there's different laws that apply to students and employees, which changes the state and federal protected categories. So, and there's no, really no way to create symmetry between those two groups, the way the laws are currently written.
That's what I thought, okay. So, but we have in there, as, as listed out as federal law, I mean, you said it much more, you articulated it much more eloquently than I'm doing right now, but, so... But so that Mr. Edwards' suggestion is already in fact in there.
His suggestion's in there. And my recommendation would be to continue to include the reference to state law because
There are other things outside.
We can be penalized for being not in compliance with state protocols as well.
Correct.
So I think by including, and I certainly agree with Mr. Edwards' recommendation to include what we have in here for, you know, to protect based on state and federal law. But I think we should include both just because we can have the same type of distractions and liabilities and negative repercussions for not being in compliance with state and federal law.
Right.
Okay. I have a question for you, Mr. Connor. With this, this topic, because it's a very passionate, it's an extremely serious one, how are staff, all staff trained and made aware of this so they know exactly what's expected?
There, so we do have, for the sort of, the code of conduct in specific, we have an annual training for staff because there are revisions that actually affect implementation of discipline practices. So, you know, we revamped it two years ago to include a matrix of what happens on a first offense, a second offense. So there was symmetry across all of our schools. We do this every year in relation to that. On the policy piece, anytime there are significant changes to any of our policies, we leverage our virtual calls. We do two of those on a monthly basis with all administrative staff across the entire district. And so, they would get those updates and implications through that.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Very much for the policy update and taking suggestions. So now we will break for lunch. I would imagine like 30 minutes. So we'll be back at 1:00.
We have one minute.
Well, welcome back to our school board workshop. It's one o'clock, so we will move to item number four, capital improvement plan revisions.
Thank you, Ms. Marinelli. We have our team from the ops side with Dr. Kemp led by Dr. Kemp that's going to review our five-year forecast and our capital improvement.
Yes, good afternoon. It's always great to follow lunch. Everybody's happy, I can see it, so we're happy to be here. I'm also happy to be here with our team. Our team does an outstanding job and with me today I have our executive director of facilities, Mr. Jody Dumas, our budget director, Ms. Krista Kurtner, we have our director of construction, Jane Drager, and we have our director of planning, Diane Comanati. And as I open, you know, I want to talk about a little bit about this time last year, I had an opportunity to sit in front of you for the first time, many of you for the first time, and we talked about the critical needs moving forward and how strategic priorities require strategic abandonment sometimes. Little did I know at that time that the legislative landscape for funding was going to do what it did. I can tell you in my 35, 36 years, it's been, this cycle's been extremely difficult when you think about all the costs that we talked about today, when y'all brought the cost questions up regarding unfunded mandates, underfunded mandates, there's just no way that all of the significant impact, the cumulative impact of all the things that have not kept up with the slight increases in revenue that have been received. So when you think about, you know, just very briefly, when you think about some of the things we're addressing in the capital program, but the district in general, whether it's, you know, FRS contributions, health insurance costs, utility costs, construction costs have doubled, we're forced to do, we're paid twice as much for half of what we used to be able to accomplish. The safety security cost never, rarely does, rarely does, do we get the funding, rarely do we get the funding to cover these things. So I just want to make sure that, well, we're doing everything we can in operations to stay focused on making sure that we can do anything together, we can decide to do anything, but we just can't do everything. So especially when we were in the middle building schools. So our focus in ops, especially on the facilities planning, construction and for capital programs, my focus is really to maximize our existing resources the best we can. And that's just not only to, not only to make sure that our deferred maintenance issues are taken care of in the SIP, but also making sure that, you know, we're prepared for strategic growth moving forward. You know, we certainly need to maximize our resources with that moving forward, putting more classroom additions where we can, expanding on existing sites where we can, just due to the cost of construction. I mentioned last year, some of the priorities for us is also to try to control debt service to make that we manage that. Debt has to be leveraged for sure, but it's very important for us to control debt service because debt service is the first thing that comes out of the capital program budget. In addition to that, you know, every district in the state has had to look at creative strategies to help offset some of the issues on general fund. And one of the things we also leverage as a strategy is, you know, when we reclass eligible general fund expenditures to be paid for by capital, that's a strategy that every county uses, it's a strategy that is always good, it's just, sometimes it's just difficult when you're doing new builds and reclassing. So, but we have that opportunity and when capital programs, we certainly step forward and every inch, every inch we get to help out with the entire program because that's what we're here for. So our goal is to minimize the impact, even though we're facing some tight fiscal constraints, our goal is to absolutely minimize the impact on our level of service that we provide to the schools. It's really important that, that we make sure that everything works for every student every day. With that said, I'm going to, we're going to move right on through, I'm going to start and ask Ms. Kurtner to do a review of the capital program funding.
Good afternoon. I'm just going to get started, I'm going to talk a little bit about the revenues that we're anticipating for the capital. As you know, the main revenue sources are our millage and our sales tax and impact fees. So looking forward to next year, what we have in regards to millage is we think, what the preliminary tax rule said is that we were going to have an increase of about 2.78%, which as you know is lower than historical for a long time. The certified tax rule doesn't come until about July and we do hope that it will be a little bit more than that and that's what the conference report had. So this budget to be conservative is built off of the preliminary tax rule, so we do anticipate a little bit more. For the years for millage, again, to be conservative, we kept the increase at about a 3.5% until the fifth year in which we are hoping there will be a turnaround or what we see forecasted about a 4%, but again, being conservative. The sales tax, that revenue, we got word from Sarasota County that basically that was down for them, the sales tax revenue from anticipated, so we saw a leveling like a status quo, so that's good. So next year, we also built just a status quo for the sales tax revenue. We did forecast a little bit of an increase, the county said they do believe it will come up a little bit over the next few years of about, well, the following year 1.5% and then we're going up to two and a half and then finally ending at 3% in year five. So just a little bit of growth. They do anticipate it will come back, but they had let us know that tourism revenues were down, so. Then finally, we have our impact fees and though that's just a small part of our revenues, they are very important to us. And for next year, we have them going up about 6% and that's because of the increase of the fees themselves.
We have one minute.
Well, welcome back to our school board workshop. It's one o'clock, so we will move to item number four, capital improvement plan revisions.
Thank you, Ms. Marinelli. We have our team from the ops side with Dr. Kemp led by Dr. Kemp that's going to review our five-year forecast and our capital improvement.
Yes, good afternoon. It's always great to follow lunch. Everybody's happy. I can see it. So we're happy to be here. I'm also happy to be here with our team. Our team does an outstanding job. And with me today, I have our executive director of facilities, Mr. Jody Dumas, our budget director, Ms. Krista Kurtner. We have our director of construction, Jane Drager, and we have our director of planning, Diane Comanati. And as I open, you know, I want to talk about a little bit about this time last year, I had an opportunity to sit in front of you for the first time, many of you for the first time. And we talked about the critical needs moving forward and how, you know, strategic priorities require strategic abandonment sometimes. And little did I know at that time that the legislative landscape for funding was going to do what it did. I can tell you in my 35, 36 years, it's been, this, this cycle's been extremely difficult when you think about all the costs that we talked about today, when y'all brought the cost questions up regarding unfunded mandates, underfunded mandates. There's just no way that all of the significant impact, the cumulative impact of all the things that have not kept up with the slight increases in revenue that have been received. So when you think about, you know, just very briefly, when you think about some of the things we're addressing in the capital program, but, but the district in general, whether it's, you know, FRS contributions, health insurance costs, utility costs, construction costs have doubled, which we're forced to do, we're paid twice as much for half of what we were used to be able to accomplish. The safety security cost never, rarely does, rarely does, do we get the funding? Really do we get the funding to cover these things? So I just want to make sure that, that, well, we're doing everything we can in operations to stay focused on making sure that we can do anything together. We can decide to do anything, but we just can't do everything. So especially when we were in the middle building schools. So our focus in, in ops, especially on the, on the facilities planning, construction and for capital programs, my focus is really to maximize our existing resources the best we can. And that's just not only to, not only to make sure that our deferred maintenance issues are taken care of in the SIP, but also making sure that, you know, we're prepared for strategic growth moving forward. You know, we certainly need to maximize our resources with that moving forward, putting more classroom additions where we can, expanding on existing sites where we can, just due to the cost of construction. I mentioned last year, some of the priorities for us is also to try to control debt service, to make that we manage that. Debt has to be leveraged for sure, but it's very important for us to control debt service because debt service is the first thing that comes out of the capital program budget. In addition to that, you know, every district in the, in the state has had to look at creative strategies to help offset some of the issues on general fund. And one of the things we also leverage as a strategy is, you know, when we reclass eligible general fund expenditures to be paid for by capital. That's a strategy that every county uses. It's a strategy that, that is always good. It's just, sometimes it's just difficult when you're doing a new builds and reclassing. So, but we have that opportunity. And when capital programs, we certainly step forward and every ten inch, every inch we get to help out with the entire program because that's what we're here for. So our goal is to minimize the impact, even though we're facing some, some tight fiscal constraints, our goal is to absolutely minimize the impact on our level of service than support that we provide to the schools. It's really important that, that we make sure that everything works for every student every day. With that said, I'm going to, we're going to move right on through. I'm going to start and ask Ms. Kurtner to do a review of the capital program funding.
Good afternoon. I'm just going to get started. I'm going to talk a little bit about the revenues that we're anticipating for the capital. As you know, the main revenue sources are our millage and our sales tax and impact fees. So looking forward to next year, what we have in regards to millage is we think, what the, what the preliminary tax rule said is that we were going to have an increase of about 2.78%, which as you know, is lower than historical for a long time. The certified tax rule doesn't come until about July, and we do hope that it will be a little bit more than that. And that's what the conference report had. So this budget, to be conservative, is built off of the preliminary tax rule. So we do anticipate a little bit more. For the years for millage, again, to be conservative, we kept the increase at about a 3.5% until the fifth year in which we are hoping there will be a turnaround or what we see forecasted about a 4%. But again, being conservative. The sales tax, that revenue, we got word from Sarasota County that basically that was down for them, the sales tax revenue from anticipated. So we saw a leveling, like a status quo. So that's good. So next year, we also built just a status quo for the sales tax revenue. We did forecast a little bit of an increase. The county said they do believe it will come up a little bit over the next few years of about, for, well, the following year, 1.5%. And then we're going up to two and a half, and then finally ending at 3% in year five. So just a little bit of growth. They do, they do anticipate it will come back, but they had let us know that tourism revenues were down. So then finally, we have our impact fees. And though that's just a small part of our revenues, they are very important to us. And for next year, we have them going up about 6%. And that's because of the increase of the fees themselves. And then after that, though, however, we just have them basically status quo or at 1% because we, you know, that's just, the growth isn't there right now as far as our, our, our population. So that's what we're showing. Just some special notes to let you guys know what we're facing in each of the years coming up. So for, let's see, for the 27, 28 year, you guys are aware of the fact that we will be having the full impact of their payment to the charters, what we owe them for capital millage. So that, that is definitely impacting us. We do have anticipated borrows if, if, you know, things still go the same in 27 and in 28. So you'll see those listed there as well. But that is, that is what I have for you guys. Any questions?
So just, just to add to this, you know, while we, while we develop a five-year capital improvement plan, it's really five one-year plans in a row based on funding, based on what happens, based on what, what happens with growth. So it's a flexible and fluid document that we review with you every year. And you'll see some changes. As a matter, as a matter of fact, Mr. Dumas is, with the read ahead that we provided, I'm going to ask Mr. Dumas to run down year by year, the projects that, that we have. And you'll see that there's been some that have been added back in in later years and some that have been moved out. But again, it's really, it is a five-year plan, but it's really five one-year plans in a row depending upon all those variables that we can't control sometimes. So Mr. Dumas, you'll do that.
Thank you, Dr. Kemp. Appreciate the opportunity. And again, yes, sir.
Your detail is lumped into state and local funding. Is that, can, can I see a copy of the detail or all the board members? I'd like to see that.
Absolutely, yep.
Okay. Well, thank you for the opportunity to kind of run through how we plan to expend the capital dollars that we have been allocated with this mob moving forward. Again, two themes, I think, run through the projects that you're going to see that we've brought into the five-year plan. As, as Mike, Dr. Kemp has said, next year's kind of more set in stone. The next four years are really planning years. They will move around based on revenue and also based upon the board's priorities for capital improvement expenditures. And I believe that's what this plan is, is based on initiative, as Ms. Kurtner mentioned, the slowing of growth across the district. So you see some projects that move around since the last time you've, you've seen this plan. So with that, it's going to be a team approach here. We'll jump in year by year, go project by project, and certainly stop us as we go through if you've got any specific questions on, on projects. So funding for next year, 2025, I want to first highlight the first project we've been talking about. We're ready to go on, and that's Northport High HVAC science, HVAC and science wing refresh. We've been talking about that project for a few years with the board. We're ready to kick that off. And so Jane, if you want to talk a little bit more specifically about where we are with that project.
Thank you, Jody. Yeah, I'd be glad to talk about Northport High. The plan is to do a complete HVAC renovation. So for those of you maybe unfamiliar with that, it's the airside, which is the ductwork and the equipment inside, and also the waterside, the chill water pipes that run throughout the campus. We'll be replacing and upgrading those. Sorry. Putting in new plumbing fixtures, new LED lights, new fire alarm, new finishes, ceiling, paint and flooring, replacing some exterior doors and some windows on the campus, and then reconfiguring kitchen and serving lines and add a new cooler and freezer. In addition to that, we'll be reconfiguring the science labs to meet the new district standards. And as part of our swing space, and like Dr. said, in, in trying to be good stewards, we're thinking of a classroom wing addition here that will be used for swing space during the construction, but then when the construction is over, the capacity of the school will be slightly increased so that we can forego building a new high school in that area. And where we are with that is if it's approved, we will start the selection process for the architect and the construction manager.
And just to remind you, last year was the initial funding. This is the second year of funding. So we have full budget. And so we'll start moving ahead with that project ASAP. The second project on the list for, for next year is Oak Park Wing renovations. And we've been doing those for a few years. We've walked our way throughout that campus. This next year will be the final phase of that project. And so we are so happy with the way Oak Park has turned out. If you haven't been in Oak Park in a long time, from the fields up front to the buildings, it'd be a great tour for you. So that'll complete that, that multi-year project. And that's funded at 3.4 million. A priority established a few years ago was inclusion of high school sand volley courts on high school campuses. We started that process that they've been installed on several campuses in conjunction with other construction projects. This is the Reming campuses that's funded in this year. Asset preservation, Sarasota Middle re-roof. We re-roofed a book middle a few years ago. This is a sister school, and we'll be walking our way through those campuses. This is year one of a funding plan for that project at 1.3 million first year. And you'll see that get funded year over year until we have the full budget for that project. You're going to see that strategy in many of our projects. And because of the flow, the cash flow, we just cannot fund projects in one year anymore. You'll see multiple years of funding. Once we get enough funding to go into contact, that's when Jane and her team kind of take over. So that strategy, we've been using for the last few years, and that will continue in this capital budget. STC Phase Three expansion, a lot of conversation about that project with the board. We have a $7.5 million grant, federal grant that we're going to be utilizing to, to increase the budget on that project. In our budget, we've got 10.5 million scheduled for this year and 5.5 for next year for a total budget of 23.5 million for that particular project. And Jane, want to talk a little bit about where we are with, with that?
Sure. So because of the federal grant, we are working with purchasing and the county from whom we received the subrecipient grant that you all approved last week. We're trying to get a firm to assist with this process because of the compliance issues. The entire total project budget of 23 million must comply with all the grant requirements, even though the grant is only 7.5 million of that. It's going to be about a 30,000 square foot addition to maximize the square footage that we have there to accommodate automotive, welding, construction and health trades. And again, with this one, if approved, we will move forward with the architect and construction manager selection process.
Okay, we'll move into 2026. If there are no questions on the project we just talked about in 2025. 2026 will, will be the first, you'll see this project again. This is a project you've seen for a couple of years, but it has been moved out one year. That's, take a look at the growth we're seeing in the, excuse me, the Lakewood Ranch area. And so let me turn it over to Ms. Comanati, a little bit about, about this project and why we moved it out a little bit.
So we've been actively monitoring growth and development in the Lakewood Ranch area. We had not seen the enrollment into our school district as, as we had anticipated. So we had put this project off for, in one, for one year in the budget to keep monitoring and seeing with all the new development that they're building, if we're going to start seeing more families move in, depending on the price points and if they're attractive to families. But we did not see that for this year to pull the trigger on funding that build. So we'll continue to monitor, we'll, we'll, we'll look at our 40-day counts coming October and see if we're, we're starting to see an increase of students coming in.
And because we've pushed this project out one year, so you know, at the elementary level, this is all this growth that does come in, whatever rate it does come in at over the next year goes to Tatum Ridge Elementary. We've already, Jane and her team have already put additional portables on the Tatum Ridge campus to accommodate what students we do see for growth. Number two is Sarasota Middle. That's the second year of project funding for that project. It's the project we talked about with roof replacement. The next one down is again, ST, the expansion of STC Phase Three in Northport. That's the second round of funding from, from our district to complete that project. And the fourth item down there on your list is the Sarasota High Auditorium replacement. It's something we've been talking about a few years, been on and off. The budget is a big ticket item. We're budgeting that at 75 million. And that is back in the funding plan for actually a three-year funding plan. Jane, do you want to talk a little bit about, about that project?
Yes. So we did a master plan in 2023, which included tearing down the old auditorium and some small ancillary buildings, constructing a theater and the music suites, and then going back in and renovating the old music spaces into classrooms in Bill 13, which, which would allow, allow us to add 10 or 12 classrooms and increase the capacity of the school as well. It will also provide a more comprehensive high school campus. And I believe it will be our last school where we can address the auditorium.
Okay, moving into funding year 2027, we now see Inglewood Elementary coming up to the capital plan. This is, we've had this on the capital plan on and off the last few years, but it is replacement of the older buildings on campus, buildings four and five. And it's got a three-year funding plan associated with that project. The next project you see for that year is the elementary school at Woodlands in Northport. And that is also a growth project for the Northport area. And I'll turn it to Ms. Comanati to talk about that.
So this is one of the areas that, as Dr. Kemp had mentioned earlier, that we had evaluated adding wings to some of our campuses. We, we did an extensive evaluation of the elementary schools in this area and had determined that it was not feasible to add, add a wing. We are adding portables to these campuses to adjust, address growth in, over the next few years. And we'll continue to monitor growth and development in the Northport area to determine the timing of funding for the school. We have kept it in the 20, 26, 27 school, 27, 28, sorry, 27, 28 funding year where it was in last year's CIP. So we have not moved it, but we will continue to monitor development in that area. Some of the development that we had anticipated was in that northeast quadrant, just northeast of, of Toledo and 75. Some of that development has been delayed because of infrastructure issues in Northport. So we'll, we'll keep working with the planning departments with the city of Northport and determine if that development will still occur and when will occur and determine the timing and need of the school.
And as Ms. Comanati mentioned, portable are already being placed on the campuses in Northport where we think we'll see growth prior to this build. And so we've, I feel, feel like accommodated that growth until we get to this project. The next project is a maintenance project, Oak Park Re-roof. Again, like Sarasota Middle and Booker Middle, it's a metal roof, and we'll be running through Oak Park and be replacing all of the building roofs on that campus. And when, this is a project that always strikes out at me. And Dr. Kemp talked a little bit about construction costs. And when you think about all we're doing is replacing roofs at Oak Park, but we're going to spend 22 million to do that, that is, I think, it shows you kind of what we're dealing with on our capital budget for cost of projects. And again, the next one, the next item down is continuing to fund that Sarasota High Auditorium replacement project we previously discussed. In 28, 29, again, you see the element, the next year funding at Inglewood Elementary for replacement of buildings four and five. We now pick up Laurel and LaComis roof to replace that roof in a two-funding plan, continue to fund the Oak Park Re-roof project, and continue to fund year three of the Sarasota High Auditorium replacement project. In 2930, again, we're funding the Inglewood four and five building replacement, the Laurel and LaComis re-roof, the Oak Park re-roof. Item number four is the first time we'll be funding this project, and it has moved around a little bit. That is constructing an Aqua Dome over at Riverview to replace the temporary structure that was in place for their, I call it the fish house. We've got $11 million for that, including a cafeteria at Polytech Campus. That has been a priority of the board for a few years. We're funding that project in this year. And then you're seeing some HVAC maintenance projects come in fold these years, which are year one of funding for these projects. But we're going to try and fund Tuttle Elementary and HVAC renovation, Southside Elementary and HVAC renovation, Alta Vista HVAC renovation, and those are all year one of a multiple year funding scenario for those projects based on current revenue. And then replacement of building five at Fruitville Elementary in that year. There are a few projects, because of the slowing of growth, we're on last year's CIP that we talked about with the board, based on our current projections for student growth that have been removed the five-year plan. And those are the last two things I'd like to turn over to Ms. Comanati to talk about those two items.
So we moved the high school in Woodlands in Northport out of the, into basically year six of the, the CIP as we continue to monitor growth in that area. And, and since we are looking into redistricting a portion of Northport High School to the New Well and Park High School, in addition to, as Ms. Drager had spoke of, the temporary wing that we're adding to Northport High School as part of the HVAC project, those things combined will help capacity at Northport High. So we can kind of monitor when we'll need to determine the time for that new high school in the Woodlands. The K8 in Well and Park, we moved this one out. As, as you know, we have the, the new garden rebuild occurring. We're adding capacity to garden. And what we're looking to do is, because garden is not really a, a district growing, it's basically built out. But because Taylor Ranch and Laurel and LaComis are still building out, we're going to look into redistricting a portion of those two zones to garden with that capacity. So with that reducing enrollment at Taylor Ranch, we'll now be able to hold off on the K in Well and Park.
So that is your team's kind of best strike at which projects make sense where, based on the revenue funding stream. And again, tried to align what we were doing based on board CIP funding priorities that you've given us year after year. So with that, if you've got any questions, we're happy to answer any of them.
Mrs. Barker?
Thank you. It's always interesting to talk about what's coming down the pike for our schools. So thank you for your work on this. The only question I had was in the 2026, 27, looking at the elementary school in Lakewood Ranch, since that's my district. We, at the community meetings in Venice, when we were talking about redistricting, it was kind of brought up repeatedly that our high schools in particular are really either at or over capacity. So, and I know there had been some talk previously about building a high school in Hyatt Ranch, which is out in that direction and would relieve some capacity at Riverview. So I was just wondering, what is the data behind prioritizing the elementary over in the east versus the high school out that way?
So I can answer that question. So we don't actually own the property in Hyatt Ranch at this point. It hasn't been developed yet. So there are no, there's no infrastructure there. The roads have not been built. We have a high school site called out in Hyatt, but we can't determine when that high school could be built until all that infrastructure is in, and then we have actually purchased the property.
Okay, so we're still quite far out of that. Okay, interesting. Makes sense, makes perfect sense. The, to piggyback on that, when I was looking at building a new elementary school out there, and I know Tatum is overcrowded, and I've had some conversations briefly about this, but I just, I wanted to, you know, bring it to the community as well. Is there any appetite to use some of the capacity that we have at our middle schools to make them a K8 type model? Sorry, sorry. I'm just, don't, I'm just, just throwing it out there. Not a sermon, just a thought. Okay, like what, what, you know, could we, could we relieve some of the overcapacity at Tatum by making, for example, Macintosh a K8? Just throwing that out there.
So we're going to punt that over to the superintendent?
So thank you for asking the question, first off. There, we are having a lot of internal conversations around what we need to do as an organization to maximize our current space. I'm going to be real, you know, real transparent, not knowing what the landscape looks like in the appropriations and the conforming bill that just passed, the budget passed last night with the Senate in the House. There's a conforming bill that goes with that, and it talks about the schools of hope. And that's where, that's going to increase our competition in terms of the space that we currently have available in our under-enrolled schools and what potentially could be up for grabs by a school of hope. So we've already been proactively talking about, not just for that aspect, but just to maximize our resources, what we can do in terms of reimagining some of the experiences. We know we tend to lose kids at the middle school level to charter. I talked to a lot of parents, a lot of parents, and it's anecdotal, but I believe if we put out a survey to our community, it would overwhelmingly say, you know, parents want safety first, for kids to feel safe. They want a small environment. safety first, their kids to feel safe, they want a small environment, and they want to make sure that they're learning at high quality, right? So we're talking about, how do we reimagine the middle school model, looking that all of our middle schools practically, with the exception of one, are under-enrolled? And what does, what do we need to do differently? We cannot continue to do the same thing. So reimagining those programs to first attract students that aren't currently in our traditional public schools back to our traditional public schools, maximize the utilizations of our existing facilities, and address some of the problems with overcrowding at certain schools and all of that. So I think we have a lot that has been worked on behind the scenes, that is baking in the oven, that we want to bring to the board in a workshop, a future workshop, that will talk about all of those possibilities and attacking that problem at a multifaceted level. So very exciting things, because there are some things that I think we can do within a year's time, and there will be some things that will be a little long-term. And it does include looking at K-8 models. I think that is a very attractive thing to our parents, so that's on the table. And then what do we do with some existing facilities and schools that are under-enrolled, and how we may be able to utilize, move different departments out into some of our schools to, to help with that problem as well? So there's lots on the table that we can discuss.
If I may add, it really is about being reliable and efficient and maximizing the resources we have when you think about operational cost and things of that nature. A lot of benefits and solution, it's a solution to look at under-enrolled schools and look at K-8 opportunities moving forward, so, yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Just to go to what Mr. Dumas said, or when you mentioned Booker Middle's re-roof, I believe that number was eight million. Was that right? It was either six or eight, but I think it was eight.
Well, that was the one-year funding plan. It was a multi-year funding plan, and that ended up being $15 million.
Wow. So to your point about paying twice as much for half as, and getting half. I was going to go down that road as well. I see that we have that Lakewood Ranch Elementary at K through five instead of a K-8. There's another elementary school that projected on there. I think that when we get to the budget conversation, when we finally get there, to the acknowledgement here that Hope School and the fact that our funding didn't even keep up with inflation, and we're, and we keep getting all these additional unfunded mandates, and the voucher program is going haywire on us, and those are the kinds of things that I think we all, as a community, have to do a bad job communicating to our legislature about where these things are ending up here, specifically in Sarasota. The classroom swing space that you mentioned for Northport, so that we're preventing that additional high school in Northport, do you have a projection on the cost of what that might look like?
So depending on this, excuse me, depending on the size of building we build, we're talking between 12 and 14 classrooms, between $14 million probably.
Okay, and in that place where we have all these placards on for elementaries or re-imagine K through eight, I'd like us to have maybe a do-or-die conversation about what enrollment looks like. If it's not here by this, then we have to re-figure out how we're going to spend that money. So if, because I guess I'm looking at this capital plan over the five years and thinking, this isn't where we're, it's not, it's not valid to where we are today and what we know about today. I also want to point out, the Wellen Park, and this is the part about Sky Ranch and High Hat and all those kinds of things. When I first moved to Florida before I became a school board member, everyone was talking about Wellen Park, Wellen Park, it's going to go through the roof, and now we have this high school that the community thought was a good idea based upon all this hype, and now we're sitting here wondering how we're going to fill the space. So that's where I want to really, to the superintendent's point, really reimagine this capital plan and also get some do-or-die numbers about what to do with the capital budget that we have in place. That's the place, why I wanted to understand also the detail about impact fees specifically. And then my real last question here, because I think we were all saying the same thing. Do we have a number yet on Garden Elementary? I mean, I threw out the number when we were in Northport about, you know, that air quality at about a million dollars. Do we, do we have a number on that yet, and did it come from the general fund, or is it coming from capital?
So it comes from capital funds, and so those are funds that are allocated to facility services through the capital budget that we do our normal maintenance on. So all of that is a response coming from our budget and facility services. We've made some adjustments in some of the things we were going to do to allocate money over to Garden Elementary. We are, let me give you a quick status update, so we have cleaned all the air handlers, duck work, and everything associated with that in building one. All the portables, we're finishing up building four. We've got all of the remediation that was recommended by our industrial hygienist completed, ready to go. We will be starting flooring replacement here next week, with the anticipation of having that completed prior to teachers being, being back to school and students being back in school. I can give you an update through the superintendent on the total cost of everything we've spent. We've got POs in place, we know where we are. I'd prefer, let me send that to superintendent, and he can distribute that to you guys versus me just giving you a number here at the table today. That way you'll have real data in front of you, but I can get that by tomorrow, superintendent.
Okay, the only thing I would want, I would have liked to have seen it on this, this budget, so that we knew what it was in terms of, and I know it's in facilities, I get it, but it's still in the '25, '26.
No, it's in last year's budget, right? So it would not be in this budget, it's my, we're carrying budget from this past year you approved, that's what I'm spending on. We're not hitting, we will not hit the '25 budget till July 1, we're not spending that money yet, so you would not see it in this budget. But I certainly can provide that expense and let the superintendent pass that along to you guys.
Fair enough, thank you.
Mrs. Ziegler?
Thank you very much, and I apologize for my tardiness, but I was listening on YouTube, so Krista, thank you for the great recap. I know this is not a, it's a challenging year, especially if you look historically, and that's the part where, you know, even when we think about just big picture strategy, whether it be kind of going off of what I was saying earlier with the safety and security. I know that, you know, long-range planning is something we have to do in education, and when you live in somewhere like Florida, it's incredibly challenging because there's a lot of bizarre fluctuations. Add COVID to it, make it completely different, and now we're losing that. And then, you know, the costs of construction, I don't need to tell you guys, is on another level, and so I really appreciate the constant reevaluation. And so when I say, when I look at this and I think like, you know, historically, and I was through, and Ms. Edwards, thank you for that, kind of, because I've kind of found myself going back and to try to go watch old board meetings and discussions of long-range planning and the growth, and Wellen Park very much was that, you know, was a huge area, and if you look at Northport, it's one of the most difficult areas to strategically plan out because it's little pockets, it's not master plan like Lakewood Ranch or some of the other areas. And so that creates a lot of challenges, and, but we are finding ourselves that way, you know, and I think a postmortem while we're trying to build, it's really hard, but I'm curious, because district, as many of you know, the most recent redistricting on Ms. Barker's first board meeting was for Ashton Elementary, and that was the first time in over, well over a decade that this district has had to look at that. And now we're faced with obviously one approaching in August with Venice and the Wellen Park. And I think that even if you just look at the general development of Sarasota County and where our placement of our current schools are, it makes for very challenge of transportation issues, the length in time, especially when we talk about high schools and the location, and the way that the community has truly grown. And on top of that, I'll add one more thing, and is that we are unique because we are more of a retirement community, so rooftops does not equate to the traditional calculation of a rooftop or multi-housing, you know, multi-family, excuse me, will necessarily equate to X amount of students. And so my hat is off to you guys, as I know that that is very challenging, and certain calculations may need to be remodeled because certain things are changing economically and all of those things. And so I want to sum up the work that I'm pretty confident know that that's a part of a lot of this decision-making. And so when it comes to me now with these, to us, and I say what I'm trying, my thought process is, I want to make sure that, and I put that all in for a reason, because I don't want to, I believe this to be the case, but we're really looking at a master strategic plan instead of band-aiding, because when we look at the actual placement beyond even five years, I mean, usually strong, long-range planning is 15 to 20 plus, right? So when we're looking at the current placement, if we're doing a redistrict here or a redistrict there because we have capacity issues, and, but what is our long-range beyond five years? What are we looking at? Because I don't want, you know, even if I look at just, we're doing the best we can with what we have, but because of the geographic footprint of growth and the current placement of, let's say, high schools or what have you, we've got a lot of outlier issues. And couple that with the creative ways that we're talking about, listen, we're in a competitive marketplace now, more so than ever, and I think that brings awesome opportunity, I really do, and I'm very encouraged by the conversations we're talking about K-8, we're talking about middle school, why are we losing families, you know, where are they going, all that. When we look at what you're presenting to us, not just in the five-year plan, but also in when we talk about potential future redistricting, maybe it's a one-on-one with board members, again, I, time, resource, you guys don't have tons of it to meet with us one-on-one all the time, but when I think about like a bigger picture, so that I, we have confidence that this, this redistricting here or this discussion is not a short-term band-aid, or maybe it is, but we can't do anything else with it, and so our, like, our long 10-year, 15-year outlook is something like this. I think for me, because the last thing I want is, and I put this on me as a board member who's gone through these processes, and you have to take the information you're given, and then, you know, you wish you had a crystal ball, I think we say that for budgeting every year, and you guys do a remarkable job every time. You know, when we look at what we have projected for growth and what actually existed, and again, there's a lot of anomalies there that I really understand, you know, what can we take from it from a learning standpoint of, so that we have, you know, what, what do we maybe get wrong? What do we over, you know, over-assess? Was it the marketing of a, of a community being built, and we got excited about that and believe, whatever it is, and I'm not, I'm very much simplifying it, but I, but for a board that, as we have more of these bigger decisions that are not just this project here, this project here, they're much more master plan discussions, when you talk about K-8 and reevaluating that, you know, what would be the best framework for us to kind of get that big picture?
I do believe it's going to be multifaceted. I think it's going to be a lot of public input. I think there's going to be community sessions to hear. We need to assess what do our families want. I, the landscape has changed tremendously in the last two years. I don't think when we, when the previous board decided on Sky Ranch and Wellen Park, we even, we didn't even think about expansion of the empowerment scholarship. Now that's universal to every family. That has an impact on enrollment. So then when you're forecasting, you're making those continuous adjustments. I think for us, with the onset of competition in the K-12 setting, we take obviously our existing infrastructure, we see where we have gaps, we see where we have underutilization of property, we see where we're not meeting the mark and meet the needs of families, and that's kind of the master plan. What, what do we need to do in terms of programatics to attract families? Because I think now that's going to be the struggle over the next forecasting, is keeping enrollment, expanding on enrollment, because shifts happen in the market, migration happens, you know, those things are going to naturally occur, but I think we're experiencing some other challenges that even years ago, none of us were talking about, now we're talking about it. Charters, you don't ever know when one was going to apply, you know, you could have one drop an application on you today, right? And then you've got 90 days to make a decision now under the new legislation. So there's going to be some very quick trends or analysis that we have to make based on those factors, but I do agree, I think we need to think long-term about how we approach our product as an institution so that we can meet the needs of all the families here if they so choose to come to us.
And I, and I think beyond that, there's different opportunities just within like the general structure we're thinking of, which we'll come up with, you guys, I mean, I feel very confident in the team that we have in a lot of different areas, which is exciting. So it's an exciting time, it's not, not that it's not stressful, I don't want to diminish that, but it allows us to kind of, you know, sharpen our pencils and go back to the drawing board and think of something we may not have done before. But I, so I want to, that was kind of my broader conversation. I do have one that's super micro, which is kind of funny, I go from one end to the other, and I just heard this said and had had somebody reach out to me, this, and I said, I'll bring it up during the workshop. I know we're facing major financial struggles right now, so this is not just something that I'm putting in one way or the other, but I think it helps to understand when we talk about facilities and sports, what, how the decision-making process is from one high school, I'm going to use high school predominantly, maybe middle schools, but the investment ticket prices usually much more substantial at the high school level. So when we talk about, I know something was mentioned on with the volleyball courts, and then, but also if we talk about Venice, or I know that there's a new baseball program at Northport High, and there has been conversations about how they're raising funds for that. Can you speak to, do boosters, how, it's the funding mechanism for each high school when it comes to different programmatic things? Does it make its way to the CIP, or does it make its way more, is it more appropriate for their booster program and such?
So they're not necessarily in the capital improvement plan unless there's a strategy around facilities, right? Infrastructure. So that's the only time you'll see it in the capital improvement plan, but in terms of funding those programs, it is done mainly through the internal accounts at the school. So there is a lot of fundraising, there is ticket sales, there's concession sales, there's all of those mechanisms in place. We provide very little lead money in terms of that. So like, if we opened up Wellen Park, obviously, we would provide a startup cost of that, because they're starting from scratch. And then every school tends to have a, especially at the high school, has a booster club that is formed, is a nonprofit that then tackles whatever, whatever the priorities are for that particular sports program. Maybe it's for, they want to travel on coach buses when they go, maybe it's a particular equipment they want to purchase, things that go above and beyond what we provide as a standard. And so what we've done is really try to standardize what every high school gets, and then when there are inequities, because we do know communities differ, right? Some communities may be more affluent, some may not, try to see how we can support so that we have equity across all of that, and boosters play a vital role in that.
I have just two observations. Thank you very much, and I agree with what everybody said, things have changed so rapidly and compared to decisions made a few years ago. But tying it all together, what Superintendent Connor was talking about and being competitive and all of that, I, I've brought this up before, so you won't be surprised, but Sarasota High School and their auditorium, I see that it's a three-year, and I understand, you know, you want to put something ahead, but then it knocks something back, but I do have concerns, because that is the high school that has the least favorable auditorium, and it's very old, and I know they're very concerned because they want to stay competitive, and when you show families that, it's like, ew. So just to keep that, and then also Southside, that, you know, we've talked about, that whole school needs to be renovated, and I don't see it anywhere, because anybody that's walked through that, it's, it's really, some of those classrooms are falling apart, they're, it's in bad shape.
Well, we do have it funded, and so if you look in year five, typically, when we do major renovations like that, we wrap it around a systems project like HVAC, because we're tearing-
Well, I saw the HVAC.
And that includes that, right?
Okay.
So this is year one of, and you'd see the total budget on that project, I've got set for 45 million. That will be very similar to what we just did at Beaverton, but that's year one of the funding, so.
I think that's really critical, because also, you know, when you look at, granted the whole how we renovated the original Sarasota High School, which is absolutely beautiful, but, you know, that is like the, the high school, our first high school, Southside, one of our first elementary schools, if not, not the first, so, and those are historical buildings. So I really want to keep that and keep those up to date, so I'm glad to see that that's included, because if I get any questions, which I know I will, I can say, oh, it's starting. But I would like to also just keep the radar on Sarasota High School, and I know you're doing a lot there, because I know it's a big campus, but I feel very strongly too to keep them competitive. So thank you, but thank you for everything. It's, it's not easy with everything that's changing, whether it's from the funding issue, our whole growth, I mean, we're not getting kids right now, that doesn't mean we're not going to later on, so it's almost like no matter what we do, it's going to, we're going to get caught, so, but thank you.
Well, Ms. Marinelli, it's always about a balance between the new, addressing new growth, defer maintenance, renovation projects, so there's always that balance. That's why some of the points you've all made today are excellent and right on point in the sense that we have to be able to stop, look at data at that point. in the sense that we have to be able to stop, look at data at that point, make the best decision, redesign if we need to. Is a case, is a K five the best option? Should it be a K eight? Should it be something completely different based on the the needs of the district and making sure that we're competing? But in our effort to be reliable and efficient and our, you know, to actually maximize the resources that we have, we just have to keep all that balance together. And that's why you always hear me say, we can do anything, we just can't do everything every every year. So when I when we take, look at that data and do that hard stop Mr. Edwards is talking about, look at the student generation rates, we don't have that crystal ball. Our developments are not necessarily yielding the student generation rates that would be somewhere else just because of the cost of living in Sarasota, as well as the demographics that, you know, a lot of retired 55-plus communities, they don't necessarily generate the children. So we have to try to make those adjustments along the way. And it's a challenge. The team does a great job projecting and being fluid and making changes based on what we need to do. I do know this, and we said this last year. The days of building a, you know, eighty-million-dollar elementary school three miles down the road, you know, those days are over, you know, pre, we, we, high schools are 200 million plus, you know, we're looking 140, 150-million-dollar K eights. We have to be very strategic on the design and the type of builds that we do moving forward and where we can be fiscally responsible and address growth in different ways. That ought to be our first strategy, especially while we're reducing debt service for our late, our T-later schools. That's that's critical. So I'm proud of the team, the team does a great job, they work hard, and I'm thankful to thankful to be a part of a team that that maximizes what they can do to provide the best level of service to kids every day. They realize that mission and I'm thankful for them.
And I agree, I don't think the general public realizes the level of expertise that it takes on that side of the House. And I appreciate it very much, because if you 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 know what's going on, you have your hand on the pole, and also you work with the other municipalities, so it's it's just not like you said, oh, I want a school. It doesn't happen that way. And plus the whole approval process that we have to go through. So thank you. Mrs. Ziegler, did you have?
Yeah, sorry, one more, again, just kind of like an outlier conversation, but I, since I have you all here, I did mention this, the superintendent a couple of meetings ago when we met, and this is more the broader, long-term, like if we look 25, 10 to 25 years out, as we look at just even the technologies are changing, I've actually started to read a little bit more mouthless, and I'm still a little, I don't know, as if I'd put my child on this, so I'm going to put that as the caveat, but with the autonomous buses moving forward and being tested. And there are a lot of pilot programs that they are partnering with this different public entities, different universities. I have not yet seen one K-12 yet, I think maybe someone in California, not that that's who I want to follow. But I will say that when we do construction and components, that there, these these things move so exponentially fast that I want to make sure at least we have vision into what that might look like so that we aren't, oh, gosh, having to rewind with any, you know, insane cost. And then if there is really an opportunity for us to consider that, that'll be a future conversation, but just wanted to put that out there.
Mr. Edwards?
Yeah, I just want to fish that up about the, there was a, the programs about coming up with this do or die and saying that this really needs to be reimagined, because if we strategically make those decisions about the build, there's so many other, I mean, I agree with Mrs. Marinelli about Sarasota High, you know, is the odd school missing that? South Side, the Aqua Dome, all of those kinds of things can be reprioritized if we're not building unnecessary elementary schools and we make those harder decisions. And those are, that was actually 100% of where I was headed in terms of, there's so much here, I'd rather reprioritize and use those dollars more effectively that have impact. That Aqua Dome, by the way, we have kid, kids literally go on to oceanography, and it really needs to have a, a, a grade. So those are the kinds of things I know the board can prioritize, it's just that it's kind of hard for me to figure those things out if if I don't have the actual enrollments and the do or die numbers about where we're headed. So. Thank you.
Mrs. Barker?
So this conversation is triggering a thought for me, and and this may not be possible at all, but I'm I'm wondering, this elementary school site that we have, is it even an option to reimagine that as a high school if we decide that's what we actually need? Or no, it's only zoned for elementary purposes?
So the elementary site in Lakewood Ranch is a very small site, but we do have other opportunities in Lakewood Ranch. We own two sites in Lakewood Ranch, so there's opportunities for for visioning really what we want to build out there. So maybe not on that site, but we have more than one site.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, well, thank you very much. And we will go to item number five, review of the draft tentative budget. Mr. Connor?
Thank you, Ms. Marinelli. As you may know, last night at 11:20 or 11:40, we had finally an approved budget. A hundred and five days of a 60-day session was actually accomplished last night. And so we are going to present to you tentatively where the state of finances are in Sarasota County as it relates to the revenue from the proposed budget and some of the constraints with the things that have all been mentioned today with challenges and rising costs and personnel and all of that. So I'm going to hand it over to our chief financial officer, Ms. Bonnie Pinner, to start the presentation.
Thank you, we appreciate you staying so late. This is a quite an afternoon. So today we're going to talk about our 25-26 budget, which we are thankful that that did get approved. So is it not on?
Yeah.
Closer, okay. You know, we are thankful that it got approved, but it has created some challenges that it was so late in getting approved. Just go over a few housekeeping items to start off with. We we know that we are required to adhere to the truth and millage, the TRIM timelines in regards to the dates that we use to approve our budget. Not on here, but sort of kicking it off, of course, is the the legislature approval of the budget, because that directs so much of what our operating dollars are for our schools. But we also are, we've received already our estimated tax roll, as Ms. Curtner mentioned. We hope to receive any day now the final certified tax roll. They're required to have that to us by July 1st. So we usually receive that just shortly before that. With that, then it kicks off the TRIM timeline in that on July 19th, the Department of Education is required to certify the required local effort and the tentative budget, or the tentative millage rates that we are required to to adopt. Then on July 22nd, we will present to you as a part of a special meeting, we will present to you the advertisements that will advertise then in accordance with the truth of millage law, we will, the advertisements, of course, those are going to be electronically instead of in the newspaper as we did last year. July 29th, we will have our first public hearing, which is on the tentative budget, and that will, again, tentatively set the millage rates based on those tentative rates that are approved. The notices will be mailed to the 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 local taxpayers within the county. And then on September 16th, we plan to have the final public hearing where the millage rates will be presented for approval and the final budget will be presented for approval. So just within this, within that framework of the required deadlines, we, I wanted to just mention a little bit about some of the adjustments that happen as we are developing the budget. Because this came so late, there are times, there are opportunities, which we are definitely taking advantage of, for us to make updates to the budget. So what you're going to see today is our very preliminary, not even preliminary, it's a draft, it is, it is, you know, still being adjusted as it is. So so again, on on the 6th, 17th, which is today, we will build the budget based on what was approved by the legislature, which has estimated FTE, which is very, very important because that is, that drives our revenue. Of course, what the state decides, they will, each child will earn, the the number of students just makes a huge difference. And that's one of the things that we've been noticing moving forward. So again, we will, we have built the budget with the forecasted FTE that were actually forecasted back in, I think, February, so it's been a little while. The the budget that we're talking about today includes board-approved raises and additional costs for Sky Ranch School. When you see the budget again on the 22nd and then the 29th, when we have the the public hearing for the tentative budget, we will have the results of the second FEFP calculation, which include the actual required local effort that we are required to levy. Of course, the final base student allocation will be there, certified required local effort, and we will know then what the property tax roll will be. So we will have final numbers as far as what that levy will generate. And then we have all the way until September, we will be presenting you then the final budget on September 16th, which will have some miscellaneous adjustments. There's usually just some small adjustments between the tentative and the final budget, but we'll have a lot more information. We will have had students show up, so we'll know much better what our enrollment and therefore our weighted FTE could possibly be, and we will have made adjustments based on those student counts. So just a summary, we've we've talked a little bit about this, our revenue increases has softened. The first couple of years I was I was here, we had some real positive revenue increases, but that has definitely leveled off. The latest funding through the FEFP that was approved, as mentioned, statewide, the total increase was 1.59%. For Sarasota, however, we only saw an increase of 1.33%. I think later in here, we've got it rounded up to 1, 1.35%, so you'll see that. And the reason for that is, although the base student allocation is consistent for the state at 55,372.60, which is an increase of $41.62, the comparable wage factor, which gets applied to certain districts that are have a higher cost of living, ours has dropped off, which we're finding that that happened with a lot of the districts that received this bump up because the cost of living was higher. If if, you know, in looking at the districts that do receive the comparable wage factor, the increase for that, most, it's a three-year average, and that year that just dropped off, 2021, was one of our higher years. So you're seeing throughout the state, this was happening in the districts that do have a higher cost of living. So that cost us around $800,000, just that that minor decrease in the comparable wage factor. Property values are estimated to increase 3.5%, and I'm going to, I contradicted Ms. Curtner just a little bit. The estimated tax roll that was sent in by the property appraiser was just under 3%. However, included in the FEFP, what the state has in the FEFP is an estimate of 3.5%. So you can see why we talk about some of the numbers getting fine-tuned as we move from tentative, or right now draft budget to tentative budget to final budget. We're really looking forward to that certified tax roll because we would like to have the consistent number, certainly, it's going to make a difference in a lot of budgets. So we've got different numbers in various places as that comes in, though, within the FEFP, other than the .748 that the that is levied at the discretion of the board, the remaining pieces will adjust as that tax roll comes in. So if we receive a smaller tax roll, there will be more state dollars to get us where we need to be. If we have a higher tax roll, we probably won't see more because we're already a 90% district. But those types of fluctuations generally get absorbed and they don't, they don't impact the bottom line within the FEFP. One piece of the the FEFP that has been talked quite a bit about, and you'll see some of the impacts as we walk through this, relates to the add-on FTE. The district, Mr. Parento specifically did a yeoman's job of making sure that we we made our point as to how important those are. And that has been retained within the FEFP, however, it's looking a little different in that rather than it just being additional weighted FTE that flows through the formula, instead it is a separate categorical. And it'll be interesting to see how they fund that moving forward, but right now, we're we're very happy to see that it was retained, and it appears to have been retained at 100% of at least what we earned last year. So so again, that is a a very positive, but it's going to make our weighted FTE look a little different as we move forward. So again, that that's somewhat the result of the FEFP. Yes, we've got it approved, and hopefully there are no vetoes that that impact this. But as it stands right now, we're in a good place to to have some good estimates on the revenue side. So going to talk a little bit about enrollment, and then we're going to go into weighted FTE, because the last couple of years, the differences in enrollment and weighted FTE have really, really been significant in regards to our revenue earnings. You can see the different colors. This is a chart that generally is is found in the budget book, so when you get those, you'll see something that looks very, very similar to this. The the 24-25, we're still basing somewhat on the third calculation, and I'll talk about that in just a second. And then the 5-6 is what we have forecast in regards to enrollment for the upcoming year. A couple of changes, you'll notice with the opening of Sky Ranch, you sit those schools that are labeled as other schools, they're they're the the third from the top, kind of a gold colored. That now includes Sky Ranch because it is a K eight and not a pure elementary school. That's some of the reason you're seeing a shift from those elementary school students up into that other school category. But otherwise, if you just kind of draw a line across that gold, we're relatively flat for enrollment. It's it's, we haven't gained a lot, we haven't lost a lot, we've just been really steady with some minor ups and downs when it comes to straight enrollment. That's counting students as they are versus adding the weights to it. Now, for the 25-26 year, you see that the total has gone up by just over 1,000 students. However, of those 1,000 students, 800 are planned for scholarships, which this is one of those areas that Department of Education tells us what we are to report for scholarships. We don't necessarily have a way to forecast that ourselves, so we're we're somewhat happy that they do that. But again, we don't get to, we don't get to adjust that based on what we think is going to happen. So again, of the 1,000, 800 are for scholarships, 191 are planned for charters, and then just we asked for some additional to be added because we do think that the opening of Sky Ranch is to bring in some new students. Not to mention, our our marketing team has done a great job, so we're really counting and hoping that they will bring in some additional students. Now, we're going to talk a little bit about weighted FTE. So this is where we take that student and based on the programs they're in, based on whether they've been there for both the October and the February count and other pieces of the puzzle, this is truly important because this is what we are funded off of. So a couple of things that are going to look different for the 25-26 year that is being forecast. First, you can see that very top piece of the chart that's kind of gold. Those are those add-on FTE that comes out and was, has been added in the past based on weighted FTE. So that just goes away. Again, that's not necessarily concerning because we know that they've moved those funds into a categorical. It's just going to make our weighted FTE look a little different as we compare to the last several years. We've got the scholarship students, which are the orange area, and you can see the growth in those student, that student population, as well the charter schools, which is the gray area, they've had some minor growth, as you know, in four, five, or actually, it was three, four, we had the, a charter school open, has been expanding, and we we can expect to continue to see. to continue to see some expansion in that particular charter for the 5, 6 year, as well as we know we've got some that are adding grade levels. But with that, of course, the most important is that primary, again, you can see we are the primary choice for students within Sarasota County. The, the primary population is that blue bar, which are our students that we get paid for. And again, looking at that, you can see, we haven't had wild swings, but it has, you know, we went up, we were going up from 21, 22, we went up to, the next year to 22, 23 by just under 700 students. From 22, 23, we went up about another 700 students, and then 4, 5, and 5, 6 were both showing, both years were showing to be going down students. Now, we are in a different predicament in that 24, 25. I've never seen it this late that we don't have the fourth calculation. The third calculation didn't come out until March, which again was unheard of, and we continue to be late getting the fourth calculation. And where, where that is very important is that right now, the FTE that is being used to, to generate those numbers is based on actual FTE that we reported in October, but then we're still, this model still includes forecasts for what we have in, in February. So just, it's very late as certain, I see some furrowed brows there, as we have seen some changes in the way FTE is calculated. Years ago, we had recalibration come in, that caused some issues. They've also got some issues, or some adjustments to the, the amendment period for, for FTE, but then this year, I think there was, most significantly, there were issues with the FES scholarships, and there was, there's been additional calculations that the Department of Education has had to do in order to, to manage, you know, what does this, this amount of money that's been set aside to help maintain and keep school districts whole because of the, the scholarships? How do we incorporate that in there? What's really happening, and how do we, how do we manage that? How do we find out? We, we've talked a little bit before about what they're calling those matched FTE, so students we report in our schools but are also receiving a scholarship. So a lot of those factors have resulted in us getting delayed information, which is, makes it very, very difficult to project your budget. Obviously, if something horrendous happened and we had a major proration that came out based on the fourth calculation, which is not unheard of, we certainly couldn't make any adjustments to our budget on July, you know, 17th to offset any, any issues that may arise. So, so it kind of puts us to kind of nothing. It definitely puts us in a bad situation when those, those calculations come out as late as they do. So, you know, really hoping that that will come out soon so that we can close out our 4, 5 fiscal year and know what our revenues are. It's, it's a, a major portion of what, how we fund our schools. So, with that said, again, the, the weighted FTE for 5, 6, specifically when the, the program weights were calculated, which the program weights are calculated looking at the actual cost for the different programs statewide, and they use a three-year average. So it is truly based on actual costs for the different programs, with one caveat, and that, that relates to the ESE guaranteed, but it's based on those actual weights. So it looks at middle school, and that is the baseline, as though middle school is one, and then, okay, how much more does it cost to educate a student K3? How much, or I shouldn't say middle school, it's 4, 8. How much more then does it cost to educate a 9, 12? And then, of course, your pro, your, your 254s and 255s, your very high-weighted ESE students. So again, it uses that as a baseline and then says, okay, this year, again, K, K8 is 1, K through 3 is 1.108. So it takes, it's that additional 1.108 that we get for each student who is in K3. So, what has happened for this 5, 6 year is those program rates almost across the board decreased. The only increase we saw was in the very highest weighted category, which was your 255s. And I can, I can get as detailed as you want as to, as to why that happened, but it is something that I, I've talked again to Mr. Parento quite a bit about, and, and hopefully it can be something that's brought up as we move forward because I think it is a hole in the process. It is, it is, it is, you know, really relating to those students who fall into that ESE guaranteed allocation, and we're spending more money on them, and they're not part of this, this generation of the factors. So that in and of itself, those decrease in program weights was like losing 250 students. So when you look at what we're being funded on, just that one change in how those weights are calculated has cost us $2.5 million if you're thinking about, you know, $10,000 per student. The, again, you can see the difference because of the add-on FTE, and mentioning, again, that the fourth calculation has not been received yet. This does not look like, this is not the one. I'm, I'm sorry. So, this is where we stand today, and I'm gonna add some more to this, and I apologize because I sent, I sent Ms. Tompkins the wrong, the wrong draft. So we've got our trends, the things that we've been seeing happening that we've had to incorporate into the budget that are things that sort of happen to us versus us having control over. As we mentioned, we've got a flat enrollment forecast. The legislation always has additional needs. We talk a lot about unfunded versus underfunded mandates. Of course, we opened a new school, which relates, causes some additional costs. The FEFP increase was only 1.35%, yet what we're seeing is, for instance, Florida Power and Light has requested an increase of 18%. Generally, they request a higher amount than they're awarded, but I can't imagine it'll be less than 1.35%. So, you know, again, the, the costs and the increases in costs are far outpacing what we're receiving in additional revenues to try to tackle those additional costs. As it stands now, it looks like our health insurance, the proposed increase is 13%. Talk in the strategy section, we are definitely working to see what we can do to mitigate that, but as it stands now, it is, it looks like come January 1, it's a 13% increase. One of the trends that still is an issue, and I don't have it up here, but are, is, relates to our ESER funding. There are lots of little pieces that, that are still being incorporated into the budget, but one of the, the biggest issues that we're seeing within ESER, and it's, it's a blessing and a curse, in that we had a lot of staff that was hired through ESER. So now, even though we may have fewer positions in the general fund, they're all filled, or they're, they're filled at a higher rate than they have been before. So we are seeing that we, instead of having any vacancies that helps with the budget, any turnover, we've got some of these, these more employees that are consistent with the school system, and so it, it's a budgeting, it, it changes the budget forecasts, and we call it laps, which is when you have, whether it be an employee who's just docked because they decide they're gonna be out for another couple of weeks or something happens, you, you have laps that, that it pulls the salary dollars back into the budget when you have an employee maybe who leaves and it takes a month to rehire. Or oftentimes, there are vacancies, and maybe you even fill them with a substitute, which they've got laps because it's a, it's a lower dollar value. So the, while these are, are all things that we want to avoid from an operational standpoint because you want to fill those positions, they're there for a purpose, it is something that is a positive for the budget when you do have the laps. And we're just seeing less of that because, again, we, we had hired and we had a lot of consistent staffing with, with ESER, and now that we've, we've got those actual folks, employees in our regular budget, we're just not seeing the laps as we had been seeing before. So how are we managing this? You know, I've got up here that our goal is to safeguard the long-term financial health of our district. So we have looked at several strategies in regards to what we can do that will, you know, the team has done such a phenomenal job of ensuring they're protecting the classroom. How much can we do that doesn't impact the classroom, and specifically some of the, the initiatives that have been talked about before. I know it was, it was discussed earlier about a lot of the literacy initiatives and, and protecting the integrity of those. So when we talk about strategic hiring, how can we make sure we're hiring those, those true positions that meet our goals as a priority? And what positions can we possibly not, you know, not fill, and we can do without? Strict adherence to staffing formulas. So we are gonna really do a much better job, especially when it comes to class size, making sure that we are holding to that class size instead of being a little more liberal with some of the way we have interpreted in the past. Operational efficiencies, just looking at where we can make cuts and where we can create efficiencies in the overall operations of the districts. The district, we're going to enhance the use of our grant, grant resources, so we have already talked a little bit about that, and I do have another slide on here in regards to our, our entitlement grants, and just to give you some comfort, that we are seeing those come in at the same amount, really, that we, we generally get each year. So just wanted to confirm that as well. We are going to be reviewing, and we have been reviewing, positions that are not directly tied to students. So again, protecting that classroom and looking at what else can be adjusted. We're gonna be reviewing medical plan expenses, and what can we possibly do to, again, mitigate some of that increase that has been proposed? We're restricting all non-essential travel, so basically, we have halted all out-of-county travel unless there is a very specific requirement that folks go. We're looking into our contracts, licenses, and overtime. So what is it that we're, we're spending dollars on and outside of staff, and in addition to your regular contract and then, in the terms of overtime, that we can reduce and still meet our needs? Again, we're reviewing some positions that we did add with ESER. You know, we, we did replace some positions that were already in our allocation formula, that were in the general fund when we brought in those ESER positions. So now we're looking at them again and seeing if, you know, where, where is, are we making the impact we thought we were gonna, we wanted to make, and where can we pull those back if necessary? Again, I think the, the safety and security folks talked a little bit. You know, House Bill 1473 really increased some of the requirements in regards to safety and security, and some of it was just a little more than, than made sense or was reasonable. So now that Senate Bill 1470 has pulled some of that back, we think that there are things that we can do to reduce some of the positions that were added based on that last year. So here, and it's small on the screen, apologize for that, is just a real summary of where we, we are. So I, I show you the actuals in that, the first column of numbers for 23, 24. So that is where we ended up the 23, 24 year. It was a good year. We ended up with a fund balance of 14.5%. Our projected actuals for 24, 25, and remember, I was talking about our FEFP run, so that is not, we, we will see some adjustments as we get that final FEFP run, but as it stands now, we are looking to close with a fund balance, financial condition ratio of just under 12%. So we had talked about pulling back the fund balance a little bit. This does include some, some adjustments that we did make at the last minute, to be very honest. This includes some, some movement of, of items from, from general fund into capital, just to try to squeeze out the best fund balance we could to put us in a good position for the year that we're budgeting for. So now you can see the final column is our preliminary budget, based on the conference report, so we were able to get those dollars into this budget. And, you know, we've given a kind of a high-level overview of some of the cost reduction measures that we are planning on and implementing. So the, the key number on this page is sort of in the middle, this total appropriations and transfers out, which is $674 million. That's the key component of this budget. We will get there. We, we have, again, there, there's been so much work that folks have put into identifying, and we've estimated, and as estimate, estimates come in, and it's like, oh, we estimated that that would save us less, but it's actually gonna save us more, that's going to adjust and it's going to impact, well, maybe now we don't need to do this next measure. So, so again, this, that is a, a target, and we feel very confident we are there. But with that said, we are still ending with a fund balance, a financial condition ratio of 9%, which again is, well, not again, but, but that is higher than the 7.5% that the board has requested in board policy, and it's certainly higher than the percent, the 3% that is in Florida statute, which is really just, if you go over than that, you're getting, you're getting monitored by Department of Education. But I'll always try to remind that with us being a 90% district, when you look at the revenues and other financing sources of $650 million, 500 million of that, we start, so we start our year in July, we don't receive any of five, of that 500 million until end of November, sometimes later, sometimes December, when the tax collections start getting paid to us. So we go almost the full, the half of the, half of the year with seeing, you know, pennies on the dollar as far as our, our cash flow. So that fund balance being above that very minimum that Department of Education is using to monitor is, is incredibly important. It's what helps us receive interest rather than paying interest, because the districts that don't have the right fund balance, they're borrowing money in order to make payroll until those tax collections come in. And it's an unfortunate thing. There are a lot of districts that that's just routine, but I certainly would rather be in a place where we're earning the interest for those six months versus, again, paying a bank loan. So, again, I will go just to this next slide, and then we can talk a little bit about, you know, talk about any questions that may be out there. Again, just to mention the federal funds, we did receive our, our application for the ESA grants, which are your titles, and you can see what we are earning for 5, 6 is very near. Some are higher, some are just a tad bit lower, but really consistent with what we have gotten in the past. Our IDEA grant always comes in late, so it's not on this particular slide. However, we have received our IDEA entitlement value for the upcoming year, and it looks like we're gonna be up between the regular IDEA and the IDEA pre-K by about $25,000. So again, it's, it's running consistent. The other piece that we're still waiting on relates to the food and nutrition services and our national school lunch program. Those meal reimbursement rates come in again late because they're, they, they look, they set those rates- Those meal reimbursement rates come in again late because they look, they set those rates based on the Consumer Price Index that gets published in May. And I think that's been published, but they have not incorporated it and published the rates. And you know what? I didn't look today. I should have looked today. So again, we're not seeing any concerns in regards to the federal funds. The amounts are relatively similar to what we've received in the past and definitely the entitlement grants are coming through the same way they normally have. So that is the extent of the prepared presentation. So if we would like to talk and ask any questions, now is the time. Any questions? Mrs. Ziegler?
I'm going to try to summarize my chicken scratch up here. I try to make it in an organized fashion, but that doesn't always work out, so bear with me. Thank you for this. I know that there are a lot of headwinds, as was highlighted, not only economic, certainly the general environment of education has dramatically changed, certainly in Florida as well. And then just the last couple of years have not been something that you would think of as traditional when it comes to forecasting, so making it kind of an adjustment period. So I, and then add to that, the late budget, the session was extraordinary and making your job even more difficult. I'm not laughing, I am laughing, but I don't mean it to you guys, it's just how much more tight can you make it? So I just have some clarifying questions and then maybe some closing thoughts or I'll wait for other board members to speak. But can you, I want to go down into the FTE programmatic. So you said that the weights and the calculations, so there's been some changes, right, that there's some rolling into our general FTA calculation. Am I understanding it correctly? Here, let me get to what I think is important for me and most people when you look at year over year. And so when there's a change, just like with the superintendent did with some of our state testing and assessments, we froze kind of the way it was initially calculated so that even though there were changes over, we could look at like actual growth year over year. Is that something you're going to be able to pull out so we are able to look at comparable years or no? For the FTE and the weighting?
We could do that, just to see. But, you know, coming from an accountant's perspective, the, looking at them without sort of shaving off that difference or negating that difference is not going to show what we are truly earning dollars-wise and how it flows into earning dollars. That's why I just sort of said that it's about 250 weighted FTE that we lost because of that. I can pull that out and show comparable, you know, program to program without the weights. But again, the bottom line is we're concerned about what we're being paid for.
Got it.
And those program weights dictate that.
And I think a better way is what I'm looking at analyzing is it, it's the funding coming in to support those special, you know, specialized students that require additional resources? I mean, essentially, that's the whole point of weighting, right? So are we seeing, what are those trends looking forward? I mean, I don't know how stabilized the market per se is going to look in five years. I think you make a good point, the last two years have been very unique. So my goal would be is more of a, you know, long-term trend because I think that the feeling and then reality is really important as we make decisions. And so if we are seeing that less FTE coming in to support the resources necessary to serve our student body, and are we seeing, you know, a trade-off? Are we seeing students leave that don't, aren't technically weighted, right? They don't provide additional FTE? Because that changes the entire model, right? There's a baseline of operational static costs that you have and then you go to the additional resources to serve the population we're talking about. And so the reason I'm asking that is I want to, I want to work in facts and not this guy's falling here or whatever, because these are, people want to make sure that funds are there to support the students that we have coming in our schools. I don't know anyone else who doesn't think that way, but it can get easy when we go through these different topics. So I don't want to spend unnecessary time, but I do want to make sure that we're evaluating it based on the reality of those numbers. So perhaps you can dissect what I'm kind of saying here and I don't want to create unnecessary analysis, but I do want to make sure that, you know, particularly in conversations with our state legislators to understand what that trend looks like and how that's impacting us. So that's the core of that. I think that when we go through, and I know that, I'll just say, I have not, over the years of being on the board, I came in after '08 and '10 was really this big, very challenging year where I would hear about for years about how had they had to pull back substantial programmatic aspects. You oftentimes hear where the arts will come in because I think at that time, maybe some were pulled back. I don't want anyone to alarm, but that's not even being discussed here, so just to be, but I just, I recall that kind of discussion as a board coming through. And what happened was years over year, under different administration, those items were not put back. And so there were like additional job descriptions taken by individuals that really started to bloat. And then you have a, had a district that grew and then there was, you know, there's been a lot of recorrections. And while I think a lot of systems have been improved upon in a much, in a way that matches the sophistication needed for this size of a district, I think that there have been nice-to-haves that are very important. And I think that's the hardest part of like what's nice to have and what's need to have. And I think everyone who runs their own business, anyone who runs their own household, has these moments in time that are horrible and they're awful because it's like everything's a need to have, but that it is a process of us going through and saying, let's really reevaluate this and make sure we have a core fence or dome around the elements that are just non-negotiable and making sure that the superintendent has the right direction based on those things. But I know that that, an email went out and there was a lot of concern in the community and I don't think anyone diminishes that. I also think that there's a really tough part of our job, similar to what I said on the security side, is we have to really evaluate the reality of the circumstances. And sometimes these provide, you know, opportunities for evaluation. And I appreciate all of the forecasting because it's very difficult, but I also, what I do very much appreciate is that you guys come in on a conservative side. I know this kind of caught us off guard, it's kind of a tongue-in-joke, it's not funny anymore, but I would tell the superintendent, I talked to other board members across the state or different parts of the country and they just, the amount of, the hole that they had largely because they did not plan for the non-recurring, you know, they put recurring money, they funded recurring positions with non-recurring money. And I know that we made a lot of adjustments in the last year or so to fix that. And I hope that we can look at that as a strategy, like forever do we want non-recurring funds to be supporting any kind of recurring position? Because there are human lives on the end of it. I think there's a good philosophy there. But that being said, we did find ourselves in kind of like, uh-oh. And I think there's a lot of things that as a board, we need to evaluate, you know, how we got here, what can we improve upon? And so I think we're doing that, but I do want to say that there are things that we have in place that I am happy about. Thank you, Mr. Kovach, not that you'd be listening, but the fact that we do have the 7.5 fund balance policy is a testament to him. And to your point, because of the way the cash flow comes through, that's a huge thing I don't think people realize. Which brings me to the fourth calculation piece. So if I'm understanding correctly, we're getting our calculations because it sounds like there are a couple of things happened. They opened up the Florida Education, what was it, Florida Empowerment Scholarship, FES. And there was more demand than they anticipated and then they didn't calculate it correctly. We had to pay back additional money. And now the way in which they're trying to calculate so that we don't run into what we dealt with last year, so they understand where the students are, is that part of the delay or is it something else? Because what I, what's, I guess my goal question is, do we anticipate a substantial clawback with the fourth calculation?
So from what I can gather, you know, pulling data, for those of you that know Rodney Davidson in our IT department, he's tired of hearing from me, trying to estimate what was submitted to DOE and back into how they would calculate it. You know, I don't foresee our enrollment shifting hugely.
Okay.
The issue is always with appropriation, it's statewide. We can forecast perfectly, meet our forecasts right on target, but if everybody else or a couple of the biggies even, underforecast and therefore they've got many, many, many more kids than were thrown into the original allocation, then we all, you know, have to, have to, you know, put some more money in the pot to, you know, to fund those students. So that's the big unknown, you know, where, you know, how did the rest of the state make out? And there is just some rumor, I don't hear it from DOE, I hear it a little bit from some folks who are more, you know, talking more with, you know, the Senate staffers who work with the FEFP and all, Senate and House staffers who do that, that there is possibly some concern that the dollars that were set aside to help make the FES whole, that there's some concern over how those were used when they, when they used them to sort of plug the hole for the third calculation. So we're waiting on some of those things to be determined. Fortunately, we did not, we did not, if you look in the, in the third calculation, you'll see that there's a page that talks about where they gave those dollars and which school districts had to be made whole. We were not one of those districts. So if they have to pull them back, we're going to be okay. But it still is one of these calculations that you're so dependent on what happens with other school districts that it's just hard to, it's hard to really forecast without knowing what every other school district has submitted.
Okay.
As well as the scholarship students.
And I'm going to let other members ask a question, I can circle back, but I will just kind of put a note there because I think that irritates me, I'm sure it irritates everyone. I can't, I see and read about plenty of districts that have bad fiscal management, like they're bad. And I don't like that we get pulled into that. And I think they're habitual actors a lot of times. I don't know. I'd love to see that data, actually, I'm very curious now. But, and I think those are the things that have to be very loudly spoken to our members of our legislature, very loudly. And because I think that it's hard enough and I understand that and I'm not impeding upon the marketplace of competition. Like I said, I think it, like, let's do it, game on, I think it's good. I think it'll make us better for it and I think we can have a conversation about the broader aspect and strategies later. But this piece is, in my mind, unacceptable and something we have to take on very seriously on what that looks like. And I'd love to hear maybe later, not today, but Parento, as far as what your feedback is because to your point, if it is a larger district, it could be so substantial and we're really, and we're this tight with that 9%, we don't really have that room. So to that, I thank you and your team for the tireless work. I know Chris was gone, but a lot of the work you guys have done and to the superintendent and team for really, I mean, for members of the public watching, this has been in flux to the point where we're meeting and we're seeing transitions changing in real time. And so I thank you for that work and I know it's, there's still work ahead. And we, you know, as a board, we're going to have to have some very, very candid conversations. But I do appreciate the briefing right now.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards?
So we've had two very interesting, well, a lot of conversations today, but two very interesting topics from the student code of conduct and all of the politics around protected classes. And now this conversation around budget, all of which I think have been legislatively induced and 100% political, even though we say, let's keep politics out of school board, here we are. So let me start first by a big, big thank you to teachers, administrators, staff, because in the last few years, through all these ups and downs that we've been through to bring us to this final, to this realization, they're the ones that have kept us all together. They're the ones that have loved our students, given them every possible thing they need, protected them, worked with them through the bullying and all the noise. So a big thank you for that. Second, I would like to offer an idea to Mr. Parento and to my fellow board members that as we go through these conversations, our board meetings, our workshops, that Mr. Parento start keeping a running, open idea of legislative agenda so that we could keep throwing out and saying, this we want to talk about, this needs to get to the legislature. We will whittle it down at the final minute, what has to be, but let's get it over there so there's a place where, because I've said this before, a lot of what the legislature has done, to Mrs. Ziegler's point, is trying to solve problems for bad actors, bad school districts, school districts that are not Sarasota. And it's not a one-size-fits-all, as we say that of students, it's not a one-size-fits-all. And it's a problem for Sarasota because we are a top-notch public school district and we shouldn't be penalized because of that, period. So I put that out there. Everything that you've shared today, Ms. Penner, is, I think the DOE should have the same statutory requirements that we have, if we have all these, we have to turn a budget around, propose on the 17th and get one out on the middle of July, then why the heck isn't the DOE held to account on getting their calculations out? Because if we were trying to run a business this way, we wouldn't be able to do it. So why isn't the DOE's feet put to the fire the exact same way so that we can make good decisions? And this is going to put all of our staff, once again, even though they've already been stressed out over the course of the year, it's just ridiculous that they, the legislature doesn't care about that the DOE missed their timely calculations and we have to start making them aware that they have to be much more accountable. So put that on your list as a legislative agenda to talk about. I also have to say, one thing that I saw that's universal, know that we're waiting to hear from a lot of school districts and a lot of their calculations, but one thing that was said in news from last night to today that's 100% consistent, they did not do anything for teacher salary. The legislature did not do one thing for teacher salaries and that is despicable. That is despicable. That's number one. Number two, we're already on the bottom of the list, teacher salary. How could they, and yet every political agenda moving towards the voucher program, including, if I'm looking at this correctly, that the scholarships, that big gray number, they went to private schools, those vouchers, that big gray number went to private schools and that voucher program is penalizing public schools. And I have to say, yes, I'm passionate about this because I am 100% a public school advocate. That's why I ran for school board, not once, but twice. And this is ridiculous. I lastly ask the question, and I think this is why it's important, because I don't want anyone to feel bad about this question at all. But I've been paying attention to the ESER dollars. I paid attention to every single time that Mr. Conner and I talked about those salaries that were in non-recurring dollars. We made a huge ESER investment in literacy. That's why I asked the question earlier today, how does the budget affect this? Because those literacy coaches and those literacy interventionists were bought and paid for initially by ESER dollars. So that's why I'm asking the question, how all this full circle comes back, because I knew it was coming up today. I knew we were coming to this place. And fortunately, the first answer was didn't, but we all heard, the second question is me. And that's the crime of what we're dealing with here. Because we get blamed for third-rate reading scores, we get blamed for these literacy issues, these deltas of what we all work so hard and yet all of what we just heard had nothing to do with us, everything to do with the legislature and everything to do with the DOE.
Ms. Barker?
Well, you don't have to hear me talk about vouchers again, thank you, Mr. Edwards. You took that for me. What I will say is I share that concern that the legislature did not fund increases in teacher salary. And in a state as wealthy as Florida, to not pay our teachers a living wage is criminal. I am very grateful that here in Sarasota, we have a generous community and we did pass the referendum and we had already negotiated our teacher raises for this coming school year. And I cannot tell you how happy I am that our teachers here in Sarasota will have that funding from us. But it's outrageous that at the state level, they aren't given the same respect. And in these conversations about what we want to talk to with the legislature, I just want to bring back to the table that I still believe that it is incredibly important for us as a group, on the things that we can agree on, to talk with our state reps and to do that together and to be on the same page. Because... Because, you know, I'm part of the minority here. But you all have a voice. You know, you all are powerful when you speak with the political majority. And so I think coming together could be really impactful and help us get our message across. So I hope that you all are still interested in doing that in the coming legislative session. So thank you, Mrs. Penner. I know I'm probably not the only one who's going to have to go to the chiropractor after this because I'm sitting here like, oh, gosh, my shoulders just keep tensing. But we will get through this if we choose to stick together.
Thank you. Anybody else with a comment?
I don't like to play the blame game, but I am the old horse around here. And, you know, when you go back historically, when the charter school concept was first started, it was never even to be touched by the local school districts. DOE was going to be in charge of all charter schools. And then at the 11th hour, they realized that was going to be an impossible feat. They gave it to the school districts. And the school districts had very little time to figure out how they were going to make that work. So every year, the rules for charter schools change. And I'm not bashing charter schools because I believe in choice. But it changed. And then you had the scholarship programs. And now you have the vouchers. And I know we're not going to get paid for students that we don't have. That, I understand that. But because of lack of planning for many, many, many years on the legislature of how they were going to fund all this, districts across the state of Florida have suffered. Because they keep pulling back from us when they, the legislature or DOE, has not planned. So that's my take on that. And like I said, I'm all for choice. I think parents should have a right to send their kids where it's appropriate. Because sometimes our schools are not the best. So that's okay. But they need to plan. And plan where that money is going to come from and quit taking it from the school districts. And to not give teachers a raise is criminal. And there's nothing they could say to me to make me even begin to think that's okay. And if some of our legislators were right here, I'd be having this conversation with them because I know them well enough, and I would be using probably this kind of tone of voice. Because I just, it's so frustrating that we're in this place. If we didn't have the referendum, I don't know what we would do. We would be sunk. But I have to say too, I mean, when I first came on this board, I know Mr. Edwards repeatedly, and you weren't here yet, Superintendent Connor and his other board members, but Mr. Edwards always was talking about the ESER funds, and they're going to dry up. Everybody was. And I'm trying to figure out what ESER funds even are. Because I wasn't here when I just got on the board. And then when you heard all the staff that were funded with those ESER dollars, and once those positions are in place, people don't understand why they're not there anymore. It's like, the board is like cutting all this and cutting all that. And that is not the message I want our community to know. Even our own staff needs to understand, we don't have the ESER funds anymore. We've tried to support them as long as we could and keep these positions as long as we could, and now we can't because we have got the perfect storm here. So I think the messaging is going to be critical. And everything we heard today, it's tied on all these positions. Whether it's the literacy coach, the behavior coaches, our school counselors, you heard, that was the one position that the safety and security, they kept mentioning was our counselors. They do this, they do that. If we don't have this, or we even have to reduce, how are we going to be able to keep these initiatives? Because everything has to be decided on student achievement and have that data. Because that's why we're here. None of us would be here if we didn't have students, and our job is to educate them and to make sure they're safe and to pay our staff. So I'm just, it's going to be, as we move more into this budget process, when we start, when the staff starts telling us, here are the positions, then we've got to ask the question, what's going to be the impact? What is going to be the long term impact on our student achievement, on our students? And I just, it's just going to be a very difficult time. And, you know, you've heard me say, I've worked for this district for 35 years. I have been here when the arts were cut, when counselors were cut, when there was nothing but bare bones, but an administrator. We had assistant principals cut. There was an administrator, a principal, and students, and maybe one other position. And it was horrible. And that puts such stress on teachers, but they are the ones that make it happen, regardless of what goes on. But I feel like we're getting at a tipping point, even with people going into education, if this is how they are perceived, that they're treated by our state officials, not by this board. I hope they all know that this board supports them 100% in everything they do. But also with sometimes with this kind of reduction, then it forces you to look at, what are the positions that are so essential and make a difference on that student achievement? So we've got a lot of work to do, but I think also communication. Our Superintendent Connor, will our school staffs be involved in this reduction when we have to? I know, what, last week or the week before that end of the week, they got the notice that we're in financial difficulty. Will schools that will include teachers and other staff be included of some of this process? Not that they can say, this is what I want for my school, but at least they know they've had a say.
Absolutely. I know typically we have major times of the year where we look at the staffing process. In the fall, after the five day count, and in the spring, as we prepare for the next year based on the forecast. We are entering, as we right-size to make sure that we remain fiscally responsible and healthy as a school district, knowing that the budget has finalized as last night and what all the forecasts in terms of the barriers that we're facing. We have committed to doing, not in an emergency, but just out of urgency and out of respect for our employees, we felt as a district team, that doing a summer staffing process now, knowing that corrections will need to be made in the fall, positions our employees in the best place to find current openings, current positions, so that everyone falls somewhere where they feel comfortable. And so that's why we've gone into even a third phase. So you have the fall, the five day count, and we have our shared decision-making process where principals engage with that team to talk about, what are the realities and what are the priorities for our school? And that is different for every school, based on additional funding sources, like Title I schools get different allocations, so maybe their needs are a little different than a non-Title I school. So there is a process that's built into the normal. In terms of the summer, we want to make sure that we position employees the best way that are going to be affected. To do that now, it's not the opportune time, but I think, for me, I believe it's the best way to respect them and give them the best opportunity to be somewhere that they want to be versus scrambling in the fall, when you're going to have to make other adjustments based on actual enrollment. That's already a disruptive time of the year anyway. You've got shifting positions because maybe this school is under-enrolled, this one has more than projected, and teachers are having to move. So to separate that process, I think this is the best way to handle that. But really, to the point of your question, there are opportunities during the school year for input.
Well, and I know in the past, it was over the summer when staff, you know, you have to, I mean, back in the, you know, in the 90s, I had my position cut. I was the inclusion teacher here at the district level. My position was cut. So I've actually been through that. And I got to go back to my job as a counselor at Southside, thank goodness. But, you know, it's just, it was always done in the summer, and you had to list your three choices. And what you have indicated, working very closely with the unions, so there's, doesn't seem to be any at this point, finger pointing. Everybody knows that this is real. And I know at the district level, you're looking at positions too, because it's the perception that is out there that it's top-heavy. Whether that's true or not, or whatever, you know, perception is reality to some people. So you've got a real job in getting correct information out to the public. And I do think we have to work with our legislatures. And I know Mr. Connor is highly respected by them and carries a lot of weight with what he talks about. So, and I don't want it to be like a blame game, poor, pitiful Sarasota, but this is the reality. And it's been a long time since we've really had to face this magnitude of cuts, and it's very difficult. And I just want, I just hope that the public and our staff and everybody, they get the accurate information that's out there. So, gosh.
Mrs. Ziegler?
Thank you. I have a couple of follow-ups. So something that I had mentioned in our one-on-ones, and I think may be helpful, is as we look ahead and think something, the term you used in our meeting was a level of service. And I think that's really important as we look at what changes need to be made and evaluated, or already actually on their way, making sure that we are evaluating it to ensure that there, every school's not uniform, right? So the level of service and the need being varied. Because I think right now it's more of a calculation, and then as we've into it. So I think whatever plan you have of evaluating that's very important. And in a moment where we're trying to regain trust and regain more families to return or to attend. So I'm hopeful on whatever that strategy looks like, because there are certain areas, you know, for example, reading was one where I was like, no, you get it, but I understand there's going to be changes. But even counseling, I could kind of foresee what some of the initial concerns are. And so, but I also think that when we look at these in a segmented mode, it's very hard to get a better, bigger picture, especially from a comparable. And again, we're sitting at the high level of like aggregate, looking at the budget, and certainly look at outcomes and what's the goal. But I would like to see if we could get a breakdown by, you know, in a percentage aspect, because I think that helps. And as we talked about, breakdown category, when we're talking about administration, school-based administration, central office as a percent of students, looking at contract services, looking at classified. I think that helps us especially just know where we are, and if there's some outliers or some corrections, I think word right-size is appropriate. But how can we? And again, we are the board. We're not, you're making those managerial decisions. But I do think when we're going for approving a budget in a moment like this, that really does help us get a better sense of our, going into it, because I don't want to later on be like, oh, my God, I didn't realize that the administrative blow was X, right? Or we are short servicing class, whatever it looks like. I think that really does help us get a better picture of where we're at and have some other conversations. And then you can provide supporting evidence as to, wait, this is off because of X, Y, and Z. You know, I would use contracted services, or, you know, we have a subulation that we need that demands this more. And all of that, I think that helps us in our job too, when having conversations with the community and members of staff about the decision-making process. And so I hope that that's something I can, I don't want to, I'll lean on my other board members to see if that's something they're interested in. I don't know that that would require too much work, but I do think that would be a helpful understanding point of where we're going, especially as we have to make any additional adjustments in the future. I do want to say something, and I think I'm really proud of the way we've been able to work together. I know that there's going to be differences. Mrs. Barker, I completely agree with different things that we know we can align on. There are really important conversations that we should have with our legislature, with our delegation, and strategize. And so we do mention, like, Mr. Parento, like, this would be a good one, so I hope you are keeping notes, because I have nothing. But I probably could gather them up pretty quickly. But with that said, I take issue with, you know, the political statement. I can tell you that there are decisions that are made up here that have real impacts on people's lives. I am one of them. You know, decisions that are made by board. I, you know, you mentioned the mask mandate piece, and that was a huge, one of a number of decisions that our family had to make that I didn't choose elsewhere. I tell Mr. Connor regularly, I'm on the softball fields, I'm talking to parents who are all in elementary and middle, and everyone's, middle school being that one comment, you know, Mr. Edward, Mr., excuse me, Mr. Connor knows, you know, this is not new to him. But, you know, seeing that there's so many questions about, where are you going to put your child for a middle school? What are you going to do for middle school? Obviously, we look at the data, and that's been the case for a while. You look at the exponential growth of homeschooling, not just here, but everywhere. It's a huge aspect, and it comes down to environment. That is what people decide. You can, we have fantastic programs. We have great educators. We have a really good school district. I think there were a lot of changes, in my personal opinion, that absolutely needed to be made. And not just here, it was happening all over the country. We talk about the student code of conduct, and I kind of went through it, and I try to make it, like, water it down to avoid a tumultuous conversation. But, you know, that was a major entry point for things that really derailed a lot of public education institutions. Because all these special interest groups use their change in anti-discrimination policy to create a whole avenue of like cultural advocacy that really just did not belong in any public education institution. I stand by my statement that every single person that comes into our schools should be absolutely respected, protected, and there's no room for harassment or bullying. It's the same with staff. And that, I believe that, I know we all believe that. But it frustrates me that we want to finger-point and be strategic at the same time. So we want to sit there and have a candid conversation, a fruitful conversation with our members of our legislature. I can, you know, let's have a conversation. I know there's going to be areas that I disagree with, you know, my colleagues here. But when I'm here, I want to find a way where we can go together to solve the problems where I know we all align. And I think that should be the strategy, moving up with the members of the legislature. I think absolutely, applaud anyone sharing their thoughts. But I think there needs to be a reality of, it's not just, you know, a political theatrics, that there were real concerns that left parents leaving. I have conversations with them all the time, many of whom are looking and ready or already entering, re-entering because of the changes this board has made, because of the changes the state legislature has made, but most importantly, because I think the leadership, there's a lot more competence, like, there's a lot more confidence in the leadership, because it's core focused on every student, on academics. And that cannot be restated enough. That plays a huge role. When we look at our strategies going forward, that is a huge role. It goes down to, I tell you, more parents talk about culture and environment than they do about progress. Maybe as a high school student, you hear it, but I'm not, that's the number one thing. People will probably more likely substitute high-quality academics. They'll lower that standard if they feel that that environment aligns to their values, to the environment that they expect their student learning in. And we got to take that seriously, or else you're never going to regain the trust. And we are on that path. But when it kind of blows and explodes into some of the theatrics we see at board meetings here, those things cause people concern. So I'm happy that we, the board, have really kind of focused and tried to stay in an area where we can unify and align to improve every single moment and make lives easier for staff and students. And I understand that we're going to be heading in some harder directions, but you cannot diminish the circumstances that put us here. But I'm happy to say that we are on a much better trajectory, even with the headwinds that we're facing.
Mr. Edwards?
Thanks. I wanted to, I do have one question, but I think that it's refreshing to hear, at least on this dais, for the longest time, it felt to me that whatever the legislature wanted, this board sort of fell in line. And this is the first real time that all of us seem to be concerned about public education and how the DOE and some of the legislative decisions haven't played out. I just want to point out that I think everyone up here is a fan of school choice. We've voted for charter schools that we, to renew their charters because we think they're terrific additions to our community. And I am all for having that opportunity. I've been very clear that I'm not for vouchers going to private school. I am not for charter schools for profit. And all of that has sort of lumped into some of the things that have convoluted school choice. And for the people who sit on this dais, I think we have a real good understanding of the gaps of where a good charter school would do well here. Or just like Dreamers Academy or Sarasota Military, those are units that we would never step up to that plate but make really good additions. So when we have that ability to make those decisions for choice, but it feels like the legislature has been moving in that direction. And that's really what I'm trying to do. I think we're kind of saying the same thing. Now that we're kind of all on the same page, we see the things that are working, the things that are not working. How do we get that information to Mr. Parento? And how do we communicate that to our How do we get that information to Mr. Parento and how do we communicate that to our legislature? And I agree, the one nuance I would add is that it's not just the school board's job to make sure that our students get the best public education. It's the legislature and the school board's job to do that together. That means teacher salaries, that means those categoricals and those kinds of things are taken care of. And I'm a little concerned about the creation of that categorical. We're all yippee-skippee about that, hey, we got it through this year. That means they're going to defund it next year. If I've looked at everything up to their behaviors, including the fund that you talked about, Ms. Penner, about the third calculation, there was a big fund that was put aside to protect school districts in case the voucher program went haywire and that was used, not for what we were told it was used, to be used for. It ended up being used for the third calculation, which is not what was told to me as a school board member as how those funds were going to be a golden parachute to get us through these kinds of times. And that's what I'm really trying to, now, here's my real last question. Did, we were, probably, I want to say maybe workshop two ago, we were talking about when a student starts at a charter school and then comes back to us and we were missing that money. Has that been resolved or is that still one of the things the DOE is still working on?
So, and that's not necessarily a charter school that's for the scholarship students. We have much better communication and paperwork that flows with the charter schools. But no, that necessarily, that has not necessarily been corrected. There is some legislation in regards to some processes that are going to be put in, but we've not seen anything that will truly solve the problem.
So we're still not tracking students back and forth, whether they're in a private school or homeschooling or wherever they are, where is that FTE dollar? That still has, that situation hasn't been resolved.
So it's a disconnect between, we know where they are because we count them during the survey week and we keep attendance for students. So if they are a student, you know, we know if they're on our campus.
But we haven't been paid.
The concern is there's a separate file that comes that they call the payment file. And those are where Step Up for Students and the other authorizing organization, where they are truly paying and funding those scholarship accounts, those who do not necessarily connect as they need to. And that's where the issue is. We show them in our schools and we report them as we're supposed to. That does not negate the fact that sometimes those students, the dollars do get deducted from what we earn in order to pay for those scholarships.
Legislative agenda.
Well, Mr. Edwards, I'll tack onto that just a little bit. Originally in SB 2510, which was the budget conforming bill, the Senate did include language that would require the DOE to go back to the beginning of this year and rectify any of those issues of students claimed in multiple education settings during any of the FTE windows and then continue to do that moving forward before any of that money gets disused. But unfortunately, that did not make it into the final language that was passed last night.
And then lastly, Mrs. Penner talking about laps, what Mr. Connor was talking about, about how we offer jobs so that people don't lose their jobs, they're being rehired quickly into open positions and that is what Mrs. Penner's lap was. So I'm sorry that it's causing you consternation, but I'm glad that we're not having layoffs.
Anybody else? And I think it's very important that our legislators know that yes, we're frustrated. We don't know everything that they have to deal with, but I can say if I ran my household, like they're running our school system, some other things, I'd be in big trouble. Because I wouldn't, I don't know, I couldn't go to a bank and say, gosh, I just don't know where that money went or I'm not tracking it well enough. So I think we just need to work with them. And I also, what is critical to me, and I have brought this up, I had a couple of meetings and I've written it down today, we need to get a good handle or Mr. Connor and his staff because, but why are parents not choosing us? And we need to get, whether we all like to hear that reason or not, if parents are getting, we're getting a wide range of that, we have to accept it as a board and deal with it. And whatever that reason is, we have to address it. If it's because it's cultural or ID, whatever, we need to talk about it and address it, make sure our parents feel comfortable and we are providing the education that they want for their children. That's our purpose. So that is something I really, I know when I first went to Southside, it's a long time ago, it was K through six, there were less than 400 kids, they were going, the district was going to close, the school was going to close that school. So I was sent there first and then Mr. John Spielman was sent there. And we spent a summer, we got a list of every reassignment and we called those parents and invited them in to talk to us so they could hear what the plans were for Southside Elementary. And the rest is history. And that's been 40-some years ago. So the same thing, why didn't you want that school? And we had to address that. So why, when we're talking, there's a great opportunity, we're looking at repurposing our schools. What do parents want? So this is a great opportunity to start capturing that information and making the decisions. So I want to thank everybody for all your hard work, thank my fellow board members. It is 3:15. Are there any other comments? I'll start with Mrs. Barker, since you've been first almost every time. We'll just keep it that way.
All right, fabulous. In this conversation is really interesting to me. I just, so my family comes, we came to Sarasota originally from Central Florida and we actually chose a charter school when we were in Central Florida because it was during COVID and I felt very strongly that my children needed to be in person. So we have utilized school choice as a family ourselves. What I'm wondering though is when we talk about why students aren't coming to our schools and how to target those people, the reason I mentioned Orange County is because Orange County has now been texting me almost every day, asking me to come back to their schools. And I thought, gosh, they really targeted, like they found me. They found that I should have been registered for an Orange County public school and I went to a Lake County charter. And I wonder, do we do any of that direct targeting of families? Do we have a way to track that, you know, is that an option for us?
Not to the text messages, but we have, we do send specific letters out to families within our jurisdiction that we have that information on to remind them what we offer. But I like that strategy, so.
They're calling me, they're asking, guys, I don't live there.
I was like, hey, you know the data's accurate.
But it's interesting, all of the school districts are trying to come up with their own ways to address enrollment, so.
Mr. Edwards?
Yeah, I just want to say that I think Mrs. Ziegler and I have been saying things like that since I've been here, but we wanted to know why people were leaving the school district because in the continuous improvement models, those are all information that, it's like an exit interview, why did somebody leave the staff? All of that is valid information. I just want to thank everybody today. I mean, these were some tough conversations. The board did well, the staff did well. I think we have some more good conversation to have with the superintendent, but I thought it was productive. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Ziegler?
No, I echo the same thing. I think that there's a lot of work that the superintendent and his team get to, you know, continue to execute on, but I appreciate the transparent conversations, even sometimes that they don't have to be, I think, better off that we do it that way instead of dealing with the aftermath. And I look forward to future conversations. I do emphasize us understanding and how can we, you know, continuously listen and learn and also hear back and correct any incorrect perceptions that may be the case because that is also a reality. But, you know, I also know that the resource of time is the easy thing we come back on. So, you know, nothing does, nothing says speaks volumes in good work, nothing, I mean, in success. So I encourage you guys to not ever take your ball off, your focus off that, which I know you won't, but those are the things that really do make the biggest difference more than anything else. But I look forward to the continuous feedback. And thank you, Mrs. Marinelli, you did a fantastic job.
Thank you. I'm going to use the gavel. We are dismissed.